Forum for the Ojai City Council Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 meeting. Gail, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Styx.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
And Councilmember Blatz is not here.
Thank you. Councilmember Haney, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Sure, Mayor. Can we please stand? Your right hand over your heart. And begin after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, may we have the approval of the agenda? Motion for that?
Move approval.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we, roll call, please, Gail?
Oh, we did.
Councilmember Francina?
Never mind.
Roll call vote on approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Roll call, Gail? Approval of the agenda?
Okay. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Blatz is absent or not here at this point.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, and then James, Commissioner comments?
Yes, and I saw some commissioners signed up, so we added this back on at council's request from last meeting. And this is the opportunity for each commission to send a representative to speak on some of the current happenings. I think with the joint meetings being on hold during the pandemic, it's a good time to hear from some of them. I believe we have Christine Golden from the Arts Commission, Steve Quillacy from the Planning Commission, and Brian Akins from the Historic Preservation Commission. So, Gail, could you let? I have Christine Golden as number one. Can you let Christine in at this point?
Okay.
And then Steve Quillacy would be next.
Okay, Christine? If you're there, you should be able to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Christine. I don't see myself on the screen, so that's a little.
Christine, I'm going to promote you to panelists. They should be able to see you in just a moment.
We want to see you.
Christine, you should, you should be, you're a panelist now. If you don't have your camera on, you can turn on your camera. They should be, they, we should be, there you go. Okay.
It's like Rotary. Hi, everybody. And first, I just want to say a thank you to Mayor Styx for reinstituting Commissioner comments at the beginning of a meeting. I don't have time. I'm going to try to keep this really short, but if I did, I would have to tell you everything, all the exciting things that happened over the last three and a half, four years that you don't know. But let's start with today. And unfortunately, my report is going to just be a whole bunch of kind of sad news. And the first thing I'd want to tell you about is that we have now had two commissioners drop off very recently. Sammy Zarlinger was on the commission for three years, and she's had to step down for personal reasons. And Linda Harmon, who was on the commissioner since 2008, also stepped down. And so she's been on the commission for 13 years. And she will have her name put on a bronze badge that goes on the plaques over at City Hall. And she should be recognized for the fine work that she did, especially recording our municipal collection at the museum, in the museums program, and spearheading a partnership with the Ojai Valley Hospital, where 10 of our paintings from the municipal collection are hanging up in the Continuing Care Center for everyone over there to enjoy. And there are some incredible pieces over there. And when COVID is no longer something we talk about, maybe we'll have like a little tour over there. The other thing I wanted to mention to everyone, in case you didn't know, is that one of the founders of the Arts Commission and one of the authors of the Public Art Ordinance has passed away. And that is Maude Fink. And Maude should be recognized by the Arts Commission, but also probably by City Council as well, because Maude, way, way back in the early 2000s, was very figurative in the Arts Commission. And she was a painter. She did color graphs and monotypes, prints, and they all had a nature theme. And Maude contributed greatly to the art and culture of arts in Ojai. We lost another great artist, which I know you all know, and that's Phil Harvey. Phil Harvey made it to 99 years old. And he said the secret of longevity was to have joy, peace, and love of community. And that really describes Phil Harvey. You know, he was a professional actor and a singer. He was a baritone. He played Curly in Oklahoma. He was an Ojai living treasure. He founded the Community Chorus in 1987. He founded the Ojai Photography Club in 1984. It was called the Camera Club because he worked at Dexter's Camera. But then eventually it became the Photography Club. And we have a collection of two or three of Phil Harvey's painting in our municipal collection. And they're well worth looking at. A couple of those are over at the Continuing Care Center. We also lost Norman Kirk. And Norman Kirk is known throughout the country for his watercolors. And if you go into your conference room at City Hall, you will see a Norman Kirk watercolor of the Ojai Post Office. And he taught watercoloring in Ventura, at Ventura College. He was actually born in Santa Paula. And his very last show that he had was at the Ojai Center for the Arts in 2019. So, sorry to have such sad news, but we really did lose some greats on the Ojai art scene. And I thought that the public should know that and it should be noted.
Christine, we also lost Kent Butler.
Oh, Kent Butler, you know, and I.
Your husband.
I have it here. Kent Butler, yes, thank you very much. He won numerous awards. We also have a Kent Butler in our collection. And you'll know Kent's paintings because of his vivid use of color, just this bright vibrant color. He also did black and white drawings. And of course, his wife Sharon is also an artist. He's in our mini-collection over at the hospital as well. There's an iconic Ojai Day poster that he did in 2015, which many of you will get a picture of that in your mind. And he also did the cover of the visitor's guide of the Ojai Valley Directory and a label for wine at Topa Mountain Winery, which is an excuse to go to Topa Mountain Winery and buy a bottle of wine. So, thank you, Suzha. He was right here in my notes, and I just slipped right by him. Kent Butler. Yeah, we lost some greats. So, thank you, everybody, for the time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thanks to all of the amazing people who've made our town more beautiful. Really grateful to all of you. Thanks for the update. Okay. Moving right along, Steve Quillacy. Thanks. Nice to see you, Christine, too.
Nice to see everybody. Thank you. I'll leave now. I'm going to go. Bye.
I'm trying.
Bye, James.
Bye. And so Steve Quillacy from the Planning Commission is next, and then Brian Akins from Historic Preservation will be after him.
Okay, Steve, you should be able to, Commissioner Quillacy, you should be able to put your camera on and unmute yourself, and you can go ahead. There he is.
Very good. I was waiting, waiting for that tray full of icons to come up. Thank you. That's a hard act to follow. Nothing that we've been doing in the Planning Commission is nearly so exciting. Within the last two weeks, several of the commissioners took part in one of the Rainian Associate Workshops on the general plan update. And we look forward to at least one more of those workshops. And thank you all for getting that process started. At our most recent meeting on the 17th last week, we had two items. We approved a lot line adjustment over in the Teramina area. Normally, that's a ministerial decision, but because of the amount of land that was moving from one lot to another, being more than 10% of either lot, it came to the Planning Commission, and we approved it. And second, we had a session advising the First Baptist Church of Ojai out on the north side of Grand Avenue near near Golden West, I think, but on the other side of Grand. They want to put up a new monument sign, and we gave them some advice on softening the lighting, its halo letters, but reducing the glare, both for drivers and for dark sky purposes, and asked them to consider some alternative base material, make something more natural, wood like or stone or something along that line. In addition, we're expecting a number of new cases in the next few meetings, and we'll be passing along recommendations to the council on those, as well as continuing our search through Title 10 for errors, omissions, and other errata, and then be suggesting some changes to the text of the municipal code as well. So, that concludes my report, and thank you very much for letting the commissions report again. I'm not sure how many folks may be watching this on Channel 10 right now, but it's probably 10 to 100 times as many as show up for a typical Planning Commission meeting. So, I appreciate the chance to let the community know what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you go, Steve, thank you. Thank you, every member, you and every member of the commission. The work you guys have put into cleaning up Title 10, it's thankless, important, and really high-quality work by, you know, dedicated volunteers. So, thank you very much.
There's a column in a magazine I read called "Boringly Important", and that's how I look at the Title 10 cleanup. Thank you.
I can't do anything without.
Oh, I just want to echo what Bill said, because I sat through some of those sessions. It's so tedious for three hours. The level of concentration required is amazing, so thank you.
I really have to hand it to the rest of the members of the commission, too, because it takes a lot of time to go through all of these provisions of the code and make cogent remarks as they come up in a commission session. So, hats off to all of them.
You know, Steve, the benefit, too, is it gives these commissioners insight. And, you know, I don't know how many commission meetings I've sat through where it seemed like they were deliberating and not really understanding what the codes were or what the policies were or what the procedures were. And this just gives that commission a great opportunity to acquire knowledge.
It forces you to get to know the code, that's for sure.
It does.
Yep.
And we can't, can't do anything without planning. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing it. Nice to meet you, Steve.
Nice to meet you, Mayor. Thank you, Steve.
Now, Brian.
Yeah, Brian Akins should be next.
Okay, he should be, there he is. Brian, you should be able to speak now. And if your camera's off, please turn your camera on and unmute your microphone.
Hey, Brian, can you hear us? I saw a light go out.
You're muted. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
We still can't see you.
We got your twin on.
Yeah, there's two Brian.
Oh, there.
Okay.
Brian, your microphone is on.
You're back on mute, Brian.
You're muted, Brian.
About now?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, because, you know, I have three, three screens I'm looking at right now. I figured one of them might eventually work. So.
No, no picture yet, no picture.
Well, I'd like, I'm doing it, doing this on my iPhone. And everything worked for the two Zoom or museum meetings I had today. So, I guess you'll just have to take my word for it. It's me. Yeah, I don't. Okay, if I go ahead?
Good, good for us, if it's good for you, yeah.
Okay, good. Got a timer going over here, and I'm already over, overdone. Okay, so, good evening, council, city manager, legal and staff. My name is Brian Akins, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you an HPC update. Our current ad hoc committee task is working to bring to the full HPC and then council, a proposal for the designation of the downtown historic district. This has been on our minds for several years and shared with council in past joint meetings. The ad hoc committee is comprised of Commissioner Gina McHatten, who chairs this committee, historian Craig Walker, and me. It is our goal to present a package that would focus on completeness while being frugal with both costs and time and not being a burden on the city's finances and staff. To date, as discussed at our last HPC meeting, thank you, Councilman Wyrick, for being there. We have delineated a boundary, identified potential contributing, non-contributing, and not fully identified properties, as in, who knows who that lot is within that boundary. Further, a spreadsheet is being completed with a wide variety of information that pertains to each individual property. To aid us in this, we would like to have arranged a joint session with the council and HPC. We were to talk about this early last year, but with COVID, that did not happen. Go figure. Please ask for that, we ask for that to happen at the earliest meeting convenient to council. Our goal is to have something in place by August 5th, 2021. Happy birthday, city of Ojai, for their centennial. To conclude this section, I share with you an early opening draft from Craig Walker. The downtown Ojai Historic District defines an area of historic significance, 1874 to 1940, representing the town's planned development and redevelopment from an Old West pioneer settlement to a modern city, beautiful village of Spanish architecture. The town, from its very inception, has been a model of vision and planning, which attracted some of California's most accomplished architects to design its buildings. Thank you, Craig. Another item of importance is our commission composition. We are five commission members. We have one vacancy going back to early November 2020, and three commissioners that are currently with expired terms. Fortunately, all three hope to be reappointed. We currently do not have a vice chair, as Tais Quinn relocated, and we are unable to fill the position with only one current member. We respectfully ask for the council's assistance to rectify this with the filling of the existing vacancy and reappointment of the three as the council members see fit. As we understand, this will be done by single council members' recommendations. Thank you all for your wonderful service, and sorry I wasn't in person.
Brian, are you still?
Yes, I am, Susan.
Mayor Betsy. Brian, I did appoint someone. I'll follow up with Gail to see what's happening. Maybe they're, maybe their window of, maybe they're waiting to see if anyone else applies, but I did appoint someone.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you so much, Brian, for that beautiful report and all the amazing work that you're doing.
You're, you're very welcome, Mayor. It, I look forward to the opportunity to stand at the podium and be able to speak with you face to face. And.
Incredible.
I, I told Gail that I've been around long enough that I actually remember when we did live commission reports, so, mission reports. So, thank you all.
Can't wait for that.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, well, now we're moving on to public communications.
I do think we have, my list shows three public comment speakers.
And City Manager Vega, just an update on that. Steve Quillacy also had a public communications item that he wanted to give as well. So, there's four.
Okay. Okay, we'll take those now.
Okay. I'll go ahead and bring Steve Quillacy back in. Steve Quillacy, you can go ahead and speak. You, you're, you won't show on the screen, but you are, you can go ahead and speak now.
Did I unmute? Okay. Thank you very much. I wanted to reprise an email that I sent to Mayor and council members about the Maricopa Highway experiment that we have going on. You have a majority of people who want better conditions for bicyclists and pedestrians, and a larger majority that does not like the current configuration of the experiment with two lanes and lots of planters and that kind of thing. Fortunately, there is a section of Maricopa Highway within the city right now that meets both requirements, that is safeguarding pedestrians and bicyclists and preserving the four-lane nature of Maricopa Highway. And that is the section between the Y and Correo Street. If you're familiar with the area, there are two very clearly marked and separated green painted bike lanes and no parking on the street. My suggestion is that you continue that all the way to the Puyama-Lroblar intersection. The only on-street parking that one ever sees, with the exception of July 4th and perhaps the Nordoff graduation, is people who are frequently there to visit the Ojai Meadows. And there is plenty of city space, PL-zoned, just to the north of the driveway into St. Thomas Aquinas Church, that could accommodate the few cars that are there with off-street parking. Then you could go back, and so you red paint the curbs, and the only thing you have to spend to implement this plan is paint. In fact, if you want more protection, protection for pedestrians, you could put additional, what do they call them, rectangular rapidly flashing beacon signals in the medians in front of the hospital down at either Church Street or Peary Street and at Correo. And the actual distance that a slow-moving pedestrian would need to cover for the two lanes of traffic in either direction is actually less distance than across the two lanes that are now one each direction in the current experiment. So, I urge you to consider this. It's a, it is a solution that preserves what the majority wants in both ways, protection for bicyclists and pedestrians, as well as the four lanes, and it costs a whole lot less than the current plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next, Gail?
Next, we have Elizabeth Herring. Elizabeth, if you can unmute yourself, go ahead and, you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, I have a comment which I believe is related to the last, the last city council meeting about drones. Maybe it wasn't the last one, but I thought it was. Anyways, so, I sent an email about it, and I will read that here. I'm concerned about the potential for drone deliveries to exist within the city of Ojai. I believe what makes Ojai a special place to live and what gives Ojai its inherent character is the lack of noise pollution, technological clutter, and abundance of wildlife, especially our bird wildlife. While drone delivery is an efficient idea in theory, the actuality of package deliveries taking place via drone would severely increase the amount of noise pollution in Ojai and disrupt Ojai's serene and quiet nature, as well as disturbing the home of birds in our town. I can speak to that specifically in that wildlife protectionists are using drones to monitor bird life, but they're trained technically in how to respect wildlife while using drones. And I don't believe that, like, a common delivery person would have the exact skill in order to navigate that situation. Already, drones being used to inspect telephone poles to determine electrical adjustments and construction to be planned have created noise disruption and pose a threat to personal privacy. This is an important matter that needs to be reviewed in detail and pushed back against. I do not think that Ojai's character should be changed to meet the needs of consumers tendencies at large. So, that's my statement, and I just want to emphasize that I think that drones pose, like, a larger problem also to personal privacy. And I think that they have not been tested well enough in larger society to be tested at first in Ojai, and I think that it's just something to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth, for coming.
Yeah, no problem.
Next, please? Thank you, Gail.
Next, we have Annette Campbell. Annette, go ahead, and you can speak. Annette, are you there? You can go ahead and speak.
I'm muted. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I just want to say thank you for this, this time to speak, and I wanted to speak to you about pickleball. And I want to thank the city that we now have our own location to play pickleball. And it's obvious that this sport is growing rapidly, as we can already see the effects of the numbers of people who are coming. And they come not only from our town, but also from other towns as well. And so many first timers have told us how they felt so welcomed by our group. My husband is now 81 years old, and this sport has literally, and I mean literally, gotten him off the couch. In the process, he's lost 20 pounds and is in great shape. We're able to ride our bikes to the courts, which is an added plus. Not only has this sport benefited our health, it has also gotten us through this past year of isolation with being able to safely socialize while still getting exercise. Now that the sound wall and the east wall are in the process of being built, and we now have more daylight, plus we are a part of Libby Park, we're asking to have the limited hours lifted and change to the same hours as the tennis players who play at Libby Park from 6:00 AM to dusk. With the present hours, we mostly have all four courts filled while other players are waiting. The extended hours would allow players to spread out more during the day. It would also give us the opportunity of playing during the cooler hours of the Ojai summer heat. We all know how hot it gets here in Ojai in the afternoons. Playing in the heat of the day, especially for seniors, is truly a health concern. As well, we have to consider the working people. Some don't get off until 5:00. They should have the opportunity to play until dusk as well. I hope you'll take all this into consideration, and we thank you for all the beautiful things that you've done for our courts. We are just loving it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Annette, for coming. We have one more, Gail?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next person is Tim Kraut. Tim, you should be able to speak now. If you can unmute your microphone, and you can speak.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Tim Kraut, Ojai resident and U.S. Pickleball Ambassador to the local pickleball group. As one of the over 100 pickleball players here at City Hall Campus Libby Park, I'm requesting that our playtime hours be revised. As you know, Ojai's spring and summer temperatures can be very hot, especially during the middle of the day. City staff has informed us that our afternoon playtimes for this period has been set at 2:30 to 6:30 PM, which is the hottest time of the day. I feel that for the city to be equitable, community-minded to all the residents and taxpayers, the City Hall campus should have the same hours as the tennis courts in Libby Park Downtown Campus. So, the signages at both the downtown and City Hall campuses state that the parks are open for public use from 6:00 to 11:00 PM. Why are the pickleball players being singled out and discriminated against by having restricted access to public park? Because one or two neighbors, neighbors don't like the noise a public park is designed to create. It appears that the council is responding to the desires of one or two people above the needs of over 100 community members wishing to use the public park. We often hear the words equitable. We often hear the words equitable, equality, inclusiveness, and community. Shouldn't these be more than just words and be actions taken? How can treating one group of citizens different than another group represent the meaning of any of these words? Some of our pickleball players have even been told by one of the empowered neighbors that they are not allowed to remain on the pickleball court area after our allotted playtime, even if they're just sitting on the court, talking and and playing, not not playing. So pickleball players are banned from the park except during the posted playtimes, but other people are allowed to camp in the park twenty-four seven. This feels like just the opposite of equitable equality and inclusiveness. So at a minimum, I'm requesting that the pickleball playtimes be adjusted as of April first to seven thirty to eleven thirty AM and three thirty PM to dusk. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, for coming. And thank you, Gail. Okay, moving on to consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, great. Okay, may we have the vote, please, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Are we on mute, Susan?
My dog was barking. Yes, yes, sorry.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Thanks for all the good work, James.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, James. All right. Moving right along, so number two, the COVID report. James?
Thank you. I have a very brief presentation today. I will show that. I am excited. I'll just say both the extension of the skate park lease through twenty forty-four and the creation of the internship program, I know were both things that the City Council and we had talked about for quite a while, so I am excited about that. So thank you for approving that.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate that. Thank you so much, James, both of those. So the skaters are ecstatic.
Time to celebrate, yeah.
And I already know a couple of people who want to apply for the internship program, so.
Awesome. Yeah, we're gonna post tomorrow, we'll post a link for how to how to apply now that we're getting that moving. But with that, I should hopefully everybody's seen the screen. We have just a brief update on COVID, which is good. I think things are trending in a positive direction, so hopefully each week, you know, will be kind of briefer and briefer because there hopefully will be we'll be getting back to normal and won't have as many things to address. Okay, and and so these statistics reflect that. You can see, again, we talked about this, that in December and February, we were having these huge increases in cases in the county. And that has pretty much tapered off over the last month. Where the month from January to February, there were twenty-four thousand cases. In the last month, there have been less than three thousand cases, so huge reduction in number of cases. That's also reflected in Ojai in the nine-three-oh-two-three zip code, where there were there had been six hundred and twenty-three cases in January that spiked to nine seventy a month later. But moving forward another month, we've only had twelve cases in that timeframe in the in our in our nine-three-oh-two-three. So we're really seeing the effects of of getting this under control and getting the vaccine out, which is really positive. It's also reflected with the hospitalization rate dropping dramatically. It's it's less than ten percent of what it was two months ago. And the same thing with or similar thing with ICU cases dropping from twenty-two weeks ago to twelve in the ICU currently. But the there have been some recent deaths. We're now to nine hundred and ninety-five-seven in the county. And I think that's the the reminder for all of us to keep doing our part to try to put an end to this which which we are we are finally making progress on. And so what this means and what it potentially means for us is there's the three key factors, which are these three rates listed up here. You'll you'll notice that the case rate, we're at about five, which shows in red because that plate that's what is placing us in the red tier at this point. That has dropped dramatically. I believe two weeks ago it was about twelve cases. And so we've had this major drop and if it drops much further, there we potentially could be hitting the next tier, the orange tier, if it drops below four point oh. So we're at five point oh now. The other two rates that count, the testing rate and the equity testing rate, we're already at the point where we could be orange tier. So it's just the case rate that needs to continue to drop. And it really seems to be dropping the county. I think the county today reported reported, I think it was something like twenty-four cases. So countywide, so which was one of the lowest numbers we had seen in quite a while. So I think that we are looking at a situation where potentially if things continue this way, we could move to orange tier and we'll explain in a minute what that means. But that is the first time we've been in this situation and it's really a big positive and it should be good for our businesses and our for our residents to feel like things are getting back to normal. So hopefully it continues that way. I think the big concern is the last time indoor dining opened, we saw a bump in the numbers. Talking to county public health, we're not expecting that this time, but it's something we'll have to watch. And it's also why everybody should just continue to wash your hands, distance, and wear face coverings whenever possible. So as we said earlier, we had been in the purple tier for quite a while. And so what we wanted to show here quickly is in some key areas for Ojai, key business types for Ojai, what the difference between purple tier, red tier, and orange tier would be. Because we could potentially move into the orange tier within within a couple of weeks if things continue. So as you can see here, there's some some subtle differences and then some that will make more of an impact than others. For retail, each tier that we move up, it's just the the capacity increases. And so that's a positive. We went from twenty-five percent to fifty percent. And then at orange tier, there is no limit on the capacity. For gyms and fitness centers, they were outdoors only in purple tier. Now they can be open at ten percent inside. And when we move to orange tier, they could open at twenty-five percent inside, which would make a big difference for the for the fitness centers and gyms in the in the valley. Places of worship, those can open in they have been outdoors only, although that changed towards the end of of our time in purple tier where they started to allow it indoors at a twenty-five percent capacity. That's continuing under red tier and at orange tier, it would open at fifty percent capacity. Restaurants, as we I think we all know, were outdoors only during purple tier. They now can be twenty-five percent capacity indoors. And once we get to orange tier, it can be fifty percent capacity indoors. And then wineries, breweries, and distilleries actually had a recent change that was effective since our last council meeting. They in our red tier can open outdoors with as long as they have reservations, a ninety-minute time limit, the idea being you can't sit all day and you know and hang out because that increases the risk of spread. And then seating at tables only and and then the wineries, breweries, and distilleries have a have a earlier close time than other businesses. But once we get to orange tier, those can start opening indoors with twenty-five percent capacity. So that'll be a big change at that point. And then the other one that we're getting a lot of calls about, which doesn't take effect yet, it takes effect April first, is the outdoor live events with assigned seating. Those currently cannot occur, but effective April first, when we expect to still be in red tier. Those can occur with a maximum twenty, sorry, twenty percent capacity with some requirements like having advanced reservations and in-seat concessions. And then once we get to orange tier, those can open up more with thirty-three percent capacity and without some of the stricter restrictions. So so I think I saw it this weekend, being out and about is I heard from a few people who said it was starting to feel more like normal and I think that's a good thing. And I think moving to orange tier will even accelerate that a little bit, but it's also we've seen how delicate and sensitive this is if we start letting our guard down. So our big reminder is to keep, you know, keep doing all the protocols and limiting your interactions as much as possible. And we'll continue to have the signage and and notices up reminding people to do that. I we gave this events update at the last couple of meetings. I wanted to mention it because we're seeing that this year will be very fluid and it will be there will be a lot of changes as we go. I think I had mentioned at the last meeting that we were talking to groups like the Music Festival who were planning to hold their event, but the Music Festival last week announced that they are postponing it to later this year, from June to September. And I think that's kind of what we're gonna see this year is we're gonna see everybody be very flexible, maybe move some dates to try to make it work or change their, you know, their event from what it typically is, you know, modify how people get access or, you know, how seating is is provided. Like, that's what we're gonna see this year. So it's just a good chance to kind of give an example of that. It's it's gonna be a flexible, you know, unique year. But but it is planning, at this point, it's planned in planning to be held. Earth Day similar, a small scaled-down version. Art in the Park is still being planned this year. Fourth of July fireworks are still being planned. And again, with all of these, we're gonna keep in contact with the event holders. We're gonna review protocols and we're gonna see what can be done and, you know, there may be things that can't be done, but these are the current what we're currently in communication on. Sterling concerts, those are still planned to be held this year later in the year, starting July. As Chair Aitkins from the Historic Preservation Commission mentioned, we are working on centennial celebration planning with the museum. And we are still working on a scaled-down, local-focused Ojai day this year. And then people probably heard it was kind of breaking news at, I think, three o'clock today or so at the Ventura County Fair, which is not a city event, but obviously most a lot of people in the city go to the Ventura County Fair. That was canceled for twenty twenty-one today, but they they noted that they are planning it for twenty twenty-two. And my understanding is it's canceled more because of a funding issue, not because of COVID protocols. So we have that going on and the the other big thing to celebrate is we are making some real progress with vaccinations. I spoke with the with the representatives from the hospital today and they told me that as of the end of day yesterday, they have vaccinated or they have issued, they have given seventy-five hundred vaccines, which is huge. It's, you know, it's essentially the the population of the city. And that's in the thirteen days that they've been able to, you know, to to give the vaccines out. So that is a big impact. We're hearing that seventy-five percent of residents over sixty-five have been vaccinated at this point. And that's that's in Ventura County. And that county-wide, there have been two hundred and thirty-five thousand first dose doses issued and a hundred and seven thousand second doses issued. And just to put that into perspective, two hundred and thirty-five thousand people receiving the first dose is about a quarter of the county population. So there's still work to do, but it's it's real progress being made in real time. And we've heard people say like, when we look back on this, like, the scale of this vaccine rollout is, you know, is going to be mind-boggling and I think we're seeing it, you know, in real life as it goes. You know, we had hiccups to start, but it's it's really moving quickly. And Nordoff is gonna continue to give vaccines, although they are shifting to second dose vaccines so that they can get all the people who had gotten their first doses done could start coming through and getting their second doses. Appointments for those could still be made on VenturaCountyRecovers.org. And then just as a reminder, we are still are we are in the phase that opened up last week where individuals sixteen to sixty-four who have severe health conditions such as the ones listed here can can start to be vaccinated. And we are hearing more and more that on Mondays that there are appointments available on the website. For a while, if you recall, it was, you know, the minute that vaccine appointments would open up, they'd be full. But we're hearing that the appointments are available and people should continue to check those and and get their appointments if interested. And then just, I think this is the last slide, but the COVID testing at Sarzadi Park has been extended for one more month through the end of April. It's Wednesday from nine AM to three thirty PM. And it's just a reminder, a lot of people recently have asked, why is it important to get tested? And really, the reason is if you know, if if you suspect that you may have been exposed to COVID rather than continuing to, you know, don't assume that the people around you have gotten vaccinated because as we saw, we still are we're about twenty-five percent in the county. And so getting tested is important to prevent, you know, accidentally spreading it to others. That still is happening and can happen. So if you are suspecting it or you have any symptoms or even a suspicion of it, you can walk up at Sarzadi Park and get tested. We are hearing that there is no line any, but over the last few months, there's absolutely no lines. So if it's a it's a quick, you know, five-minute in-and-out situation. So so with that, oh, one last slide. There we also wanted to point or to give this information to businesses in Ojai that there are some grants available and one of them is closing. So if you qualify or if you're interested in these grants, you can get information on these on SBA.gov. There's a shuttered venue operations grant, which even the city's looking at. We're looking at this. Our staff is reviewing this to see if we could qualify for this for the Libby Bowl, for example. But if if there's any other businesses who could qualify, they can review that on SBA.gov. And then there's the restaurant revitalization grant, also available on SBA.gov. And I think that's opening, it's expected to open next week, but there's information and a link on that page. And then the California Relief Grants has a couple of different groups, but the nonprofit cultural institutions such as the museum, for example, that group is closing now. So those groups should should apply there, California, CAReliefGrant.com. And then a new round will open up on March twenty-fifth for certain businesses. So with that, that is the latest happenings and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Gail, and then Randy?
James, live events, would that include spoken seminar, lecture-type things outdoors, following the same protocols? Would that fit in that category?
If they follow the same protocols, the the way it's worded is outdoor live events with assigned seats. So if if, you know, if somebody wanted to have, you know, a spoken word, you know, I can think of, you know, a poetry reading, a book reading, and they were able to do it outdoors with assigned seats and and with controlling the audience, then they would be able to do those effective April first.
Effective April first. And it looks like if present trends continue, we could be in orange by sometime in April. If that sounds right?
Yeah, the Public Health Office told us yesterday, a representative said that if it continues, it could potentially be two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Randy?
And then James, has anyone come forward on legacy events? You know, asking if they can resume or if they can, when they can?
Yes, yes, for sure. We're getting contacted by almost all event holders and it's We're getting contacted by almost all event holders and it's very confusing right now. So, you know, a lot of people are just asking, am I like, are, would we even be able to? So we're having those conversations daily at this point. But everybody's excited, including, you know, us, but it's, we also, I'll have to keep in mind, one, one comment that we've heard a few times is now that COVID is over, and I keep having to remind people, it's not over and, you know, and, and we'll have to follow, have protocols and make sure that we're doing these things safely.
And then, you know, we talked about the number of people that are allowed in, let's say, a restaurant. Are those numbers posted? So maximum seating, I know I've seen them in some places. I'm not sure if, I've seen them everywhere, because how does someone determine what is maximum seating if it's not posted? And are we responsible for regulating that? Or is that something we expect the county to do?
Yeah, so we, we collaborate with the county. We, each time, there is a lot of work to it that goes on behind the scenes that, that people probably don't realize. And, and in a lot of ways, that's good if it's just kind of happening behind the scenes and things are going well, which they have been lately, knock on wood. But we, each time that the tier changes, we meet with the county and they, they have a list of building, businesses that are affected by the changes. And we take those and we have our code enforcement officer go business to business and check those. And on the windows of each business, there's supposed to be the attestation form that shows, you know, they fill out and say that they're following all the requirements. And so our, our code enforcement officer literally goes door to door and makes sure that each business is following the right procedures.
I just know in the beginning of COVID, we actually, I thought we did a very good job, actually, actually an excellent job of interacting with our businesses. And, and as we phased through this, you know, the most important thing, we have to be as vigilant, you know, we were the first city in the county to actually require masks. I would imagine we're going to be the last city in the, in the county that takes them off. So saying that, as much as we want our businesses to prosper and, and to open and, and, and welcome guests again, I still think we need to be really on the edge of making people really aware of where we are. Again, to me, having these, these applications and then maybe having some type of account for occupancy posted, so that any normal person could look into a restaurant and say, well, there's 15 tables that only allowed 50%. There should only be roughly seven tables in use. So things like that, I just think it's going to help our citizens make better choices as to what to do, when to do and where to do it. So.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, one, one thing we have noticed was we were getting a lot of calls from people who said that, that the outdoor dining looked very crowded. And, which is what we, what we've kind of talked to people about, because we went out to several of those, is that the outdoor dining is somewhat deceptive, especially in certain areas where you walk by and you'll see like 12 people sitting outside and it looks very crowded, but it's, it's like really because no one's sitting inside and nobody, you know, it's just they're clustered, you know, in kind of one outdoor space. And so that is something we could do, which was a bad example, because outdoor dining, there is no capacity limitation, but on indoor dining, we can make sure that we start looking at that now that's, now that that's opened up and that the attestation form on the window clearly says how many they should have.
So. And, and then obviously we're posting this on our website.
Yes.
All this information.
Yep.
Where we are, where we're headed.
Yep, yep. And we have a, we still have the COVID page, link at the top of the website that we post all of the grants and everything else at too.
Great, thank you.
Gail, any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Well, once again, thank you so much, James, for all your hard work and medical experience at this point.
Oh, James, I had, I'm sorry, I had one more question though, about going back to testing. So I want to be clear that the shot, not testing, but the shots that are going to be given out of Nordoff, from this point forward are going to be second shots only until we acquire more vaccine?
I would say, yeah, so I was going to say probably not, I wouldn't say from this point forward, but at this point, it's going to go to second dose vaccines. And I think what we're hoping, you know, I've been talking to the hospital and, and everything is, what we're hoping is we could keep advocating and, and at some point get enough doses to, to still continue to do the first and second dose. But for, for right now, they're shifting to second dose for the next.
So if I call, if I called the Ventura County hotline, they're going to tell me that? That I'd like to get my second shot or I'd like to get my shot in Ojai? And they're going to, they're going to let us know that it's only second, it's second shots only from this.
Yeah, when you, when you make your appointment on Ventura County recovers.org, it will only let you do it if it's the second shot.
Okay.
Thank you, James, and, and let's keep vigilant. And I like that, Randy, first, first ones to put the mask on, last ones to take it off. Okay, well, moving on to number three, the city internet and domain name change.
Yes, thank you. I will keep this very simple. The, we had a grand jury, countywide grand jury report on cybersecurity about the days blend together. It feels like six months ago. I wouldn't be surprised at this point if it was two years ago, the way things have been going, or, or if it was last week, the way things are going. So, but I think it was about six months ago, the grand jury did a report and it was all, all cities. So it wasn't anything that, you know, that Ojai in particular was doing wrong. But in their report, they identified several issues that they were asking cities to fix for the intent of being clearer and easier for, for residents and others to find information or understand that they're in a safe location on the websites. And so one of those recommendations that they made for eight of the cities, eight out of the 10 cities, is they said eight of the cities had suboptimal website addresses. And the idea being they want every city to have the same structure in your web address so that residents know they're going to a real city website and not, you know, a, you know, a fraudulent website or one that, you know, somebody has hacked. And so the recommendation was to change the website. Ours was, is currently ohi-city.org. And the recommendation was to change each cities to the city name.ca.gov. And so ours would change to ohi.ca.gov. The only exception to that is Ventura, because it's the same name as the county that there's would be city of Ventura.ca.gov. And they, they actually recently made their change and that's, you can see that just by quickly Googling it. But so we received those recommendations. We provided a response that would, that was approved by the city council that said we would work to get into compliance. And this is the first item we're bringing back to, to get into compliance. We recommend that the city council approve that change to ohi.ca.gov to get into compliance with the cybersecurity recommendations. And the, the big question, I assume most people would have is, is does this change how I get to the website? And the answer right now is we're going to try to make it as simple and streamlined as possible. We're going to have the current webpage redirect, you know, you'll put it, if you put in ohi-city.org, it'll still get you there. But over time, we're hoping everybody gets used to going to ohi.ca.gov. But we'll have, we'll have both for the time being. And the only cost that we want to note is the cost to reprint things like letterhead and business cards that will have the, that we'll have to at some point update with new, with web addresses. So with that, we're just, we're just recommending approving the, the name change.
So there, I'll make a motion.
Any, any public comment on this, Gail?
No public comments.
Okay, go for it, Randy, thank you.
That the city council approved the proposed domain name change in accordance with the recommendation, R-02 of the Cybersecurity Strategies for Cities in Ventura County Grand Jury Report. Do I need to say more?
Second.
Great, okay, may we have the vote, please, Gail?
I beat you to it, Susan.
Councilmember Hany?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes, when we're done, I have a question.
Mayor Protem Weyrich?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you for taking care of that, James, question?
My, my question is, is it inevitable that this will be emails next?
So there are recommendations related to emails. And so we actually were going to bring those together, but we realized we had some kinks we had to work through on the emails. So we'll fix those and then bring a recommendation to council on those too.
Well, it's going to look very official, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's the benefit is every, you know, there's uniformity and everybody will, the residents will know you are the official person, whether you like it or not.
Okay, great, all right, moving right along. Number four, the gas landscaping equipment prohibition update and collections process.
Thank you. This one probably not so brief, but we'll, we'll see. The, on April 27th, which is, you know, 11 months ago at this point, the city's prohibition of gas powered landscaping equipment went into effect. We had brought the ordinance, prepared the ordinance and everything pre-COVID, and then it went into effect right at the beginning of COVID. And so at that point, the city council had said to have a, a couple of months of warnings before starting enforcement with, you know, by citation for use of gas powered landscaping equipment. And then we had talked about coming back at some point, you know, six months or so after we had started with the report on how the enforcement was going and if it was working or if we needed to make any modifications. And so this report is intended to, to give that report back, but also to make a recommendation that I will get to in a moment. But the brief report back is that we did start enforcing it, or we did a couple of things. We reached out to landscaping businesses and we went through a licensing program that, that was pretty well received, you know. Of course, people aren't thrilled to have to buy new electric equipment, but we had, I think it was 11 businesses that came in and got their license. And then what we were trying to do to encourage it was we posted those businesses on our website so that residents could know that they were calling a business that had been licensed with their electric equipment. So we went through that program and then we, that was the first couple of months. And then we started to issue citations for people that were still using gas at that point. We were citing the landscaping businesses that were using gas equipment, but because of COVID, we gave warnings to the homeowner, like the homeowners that were still using gas equipment, with the idea being that the, the landscaping companies use the equipment a lot more and it was more impactful, whereas somebody at their property, you know, maybe mows the lawn once every couple of weeks. So we gave them the warnings and asked them to get their electric equipment as soon as possible. And we created flyers that gave information to do that. And so with that said, at this point, we, we have issued 62 citations for gas landscaping equipment to, those are almost all to landscaping businesses. The vast majority of those, 56 of those, were people who got one citation. And then six of those citations were to repeat offenders. So there are two people who got three citations. And so we looked at those citations to, to see if we thought it was working. You know, the challenge with something like this is somebody could always pull their gas mower out as we're speaking, you know, somewhere in town right now, somebody could pull a gas mower out and somebody could see that and feel like the city's not enforcing it. It's just the nature of, of the beast. But, but we have noticed through our code enforcement and, and, and our staff that we are getting fewer and fewer calls about gas landscaping equipment. We are, when we're on our drives through town, every employee who goes on inspections, we've asked to keep an eye out for gas landscaping equipment. And when we first did that, every time somebody went out for an inspection, they were seeing it. And now it's, you know, maybe once a week that, that they see that. And like I said, there's only two people that had more than one citation. So we do believe that properly enforcing this prohibition has made an impact. That doesn't mean, you know, I think when we had talked six months ago, we had said maybe we would want to make some tweaks or, you know, at this point, maybe we would want to start enforcing against the groups that we were just giving warnings to before. So it doesn't mean that we can't or shouldn't do that, but I guess the report back is that we have issued 60 citations. We do think it's working. We think it's made an impact. And the biggest weakness that we have observed is that on those two repeat offenders who have the three citations, they have not, they stand out as they haven't paid any of their citations either. And so for us, that started a conversation of, you know, there are some people who are just figuring out that, you know, if you get the citation and there's no follow up on that citation, that, you know, they can ignore it and it goes away. And so we are recommending as the last step to make this effective, entering into an agreement with a company that does collections for cities, where when there is a citation, we send them the citation information and they just have an automatic consistent process where they send out a notice at 30 days that it's due, 60 days that it's past due, 90 days that it's past due. And then they elevate from there, potentially putting, putting a, are taking it to their franchise tax boards processing, which would mean eventually it could come out of somebody's, you know, tax return, for example. So for us, the big thing was we felt that the collections process isn't working. The current process right now at the city that's been in process for years is, you know, there's one staff person where they were, they were, they were supposed to be following up on it. And over the years, that position became vacant for quite a while. And then it's just, it wasn't really being followed up on, other than when we started doing this, we made a point to have a staff person try to follow up on it, but it just is very time consuming. And so we, we solicited some collections agreement or proposals. And the one we recommend is Data Ticket Inc., who works with several cities in California and works with the firm that we use to do code compliance services. They essentially have a minimum fee, it's $200 a month, but the, each collection that they do, that applies towards this $200 minimum fee. So the reality is for us, we probably will, will not go above that $200 minimum. And it'll probably be, we estimate that it will be $2,400 a year, which is far less than the staff time we use to try to enforce these things or to try to collect right now. So it would free up staff time, it would be a consistent process that would follow up on these consistently. So we're recommending that change, although council can talk about other potential changes, that's one that we're recommending. And the other benefit of it is they do other types of collections as well, such as for, the big one right now that we have is for short term rentals. We enforce that aggressively and we have probably, I, I looked at this number a couple of weeks ago, I think it's about $4,500 in citations outstanding and 2,500 of those are to a repeat offender, same situation that, you know, we think has made the choice that they aren't going to pay it and, and are just expecting that the city won't follow up on it. But having the collections process will not only, like the goal of it is not to, you know, not necessarily to collect, the goal of it is to make sure that the code is being followed. And the short term rentals is a good example of that, where, you know, the action we're trying to accomplish with this person is to get them to take their ads down. And, you know, if we keep sending citations and there's no, there's no collection on it, it's probably not going to happen. So we've had good success with both this and that short term rental program, but kind of pushing them over the line and getting the last couple of, of repeat offenders. I think the collections process will help do that. So with that, we're recommending that, but like I said, the process will help do that. So with that, we're recommending that. But like I said, the, either the gas landscaping prohibition could be discussed or that collections process, if there's any questions on either of those.
Suzie, you have a question?
Yes, yes. What is the fine again for a first offense?
First offense is $50.
Okay, now, have you, what happens if you would, I'm just thinking, if you sent a very official-looking letter saying this, this amount is due, or a collection agency, blah, 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 this is the penalty, or you can apply this to purchasing an electric leaf blower? You know, the fines can apply. And then we, if you show that you pay, that you've purchased, then we will waive the fine.
Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't put that in our letters. I, I had sensed from council that, the last discussion, that there would be some openness to that if somebody came and said, I'm sorry, and here's my electric piece of equipment. But we haven't had it happen yet. It's, you know, it's something we could put in the, in the letter if council chooses. We could say, you know, either $50 or show proof of purchasing electric equipment. That is something we could do.
And, and the ones that, that are, I'm a little bit confused, some owe 100 or 150?
Yes, so the people that have three citations owe 150.
Okay, and, and what's the average cost again of the electric leaf blower?
Well, so I, I think we have put together some estimates. I think it depends on if it's home grade or commercial grade. Home grade, you can get one for, you know, I think 50 bucks at this point, but the commercial grade ones are probably closer to $300 to $400.
Okay, so that would help it to pay. And, and is that, you know, initially, I'm just thinking of the ones that aren't deliberately offending. There's, even if it's just one or two that are out there, for who, for who this is a genuine hardship. And our rental, you know, initially before COVID, we were gonna have this program where they could borrow one, or there was something, you know, who, there was, whatever happened to that? Nothing?
COVID, we, we had started to work on it. The reality was, it's like literally, like handing people tools that, and then handing it to the next person just became undoable during COVID. It really, it really was just the COVID impacts. So that's something, you know, we could look back at again, but that, that was why we didn't do it the first year.
Yeah. I mean, I think this, this is money well spent to have a collection agency, especially going after the STRs. But if we sign up with them, then it becomes, then there's no mercy, right? They just do it across the board, no consideration for individual circumstances, or how does that work?
So that is the, kind of the nice thing about the collections agency is it is just a standard, consistent process. But if somebody did call, if somebody did call us and they had a very good explanation and, you know, and we've had this, we have a, the only collections process we have right now is for parking tickets. And we just had somebody a month ago, as an example, who came and they parked and they thought the sign was for this area, but it was really for this area. And they said, I'm sorry, and I'll never do it again, you know. And it's like, and, and so we still are able to consider those factors. They just, you know, it's, it's gonna be, they'll have to reach out to us to do it, but we still have that ability. And we could tell the, the collections company, you know, this was issued in error, or, you know, the person bought electric, so, you know.
To the electric, if, if the council majority decides to go with this, you can convey to the collection company if there's some unusual hardship situation that
Yes.
we're gonna work with the person. Because I just, I just hate the idea of, as much as I'm for this, I'm 100% for it. I don't want it to be a difference between family eating or not, you know, or some, something, you know.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could specify, you know, certain hardship situations to at least, to at least notify us and let us decide if we're gonna pursue it.
One key to remember is that the collection agency simply collects the citations issued by the city. The city remains in control of issuance of the citations and their continued validity.
Yeah. And, and now what about, is the responsibility at all with the homeowner or the business owner for continuing not to, it's always on the actual worker, the?
So we cite the, the worker or the business currently, but we do not cite, right now, we do not cite the homeowner for it.
The business owner, like Wells Fargo?
Oh, no, no. So, so when I say business owner, I mean like the landscaping company?
Oh, the landscaping?
Yeah. But so we haven't cited the businesses, although I won't use any business names. There was one business that we had called three times, and we did tell them finally, we, we will cite you if it happens again, and it hasn't. So we have, we have done that, but we haven't actually cited one.
Okay, so you, you have, you can, you know, address the issue that way. Okay.
Right. And I think for the homeowners, you know, based on the last discussion and council direction is, we, we aren't pursuing that, but that's something that we, if council directs, we could do.
Oh, I can even pay for a council directing that we address, like, for example.
Eric, is this a group discussion?
Can we finish the, we need to finish the questions and then get public, any other?
I was wondering if this is a group discussion.
Any other questions? Bill, you have a question?
James, I'll just state my couple of questions real quick. Does the existing code allow, and I think it does from my memory, is that your understanding, a listing, existing code allows penalty fees for late payment to be determined administratively and included in the implementation of this contract? That's number one, because I think the code says we're supposed to charge collect, extra collection fees for late payments. And second, this is generalizable to any code violation, is my second question.
The collections process, yes.
And, and number three, would this include, in the case of short-term rentals, somebody that's just, you know, refusing to pay or comply, up to including a possible assessing liens on properties?
So on number one, yes, we can recover, well, I'll let the city attorney correct me, or, you know, put it in better wording, but yes, we, we can recover more than just the $50 citation.
And it does require the council action for you to administratively do that.
No, I think that's just standard in the code, but city attorney.
Right, that's what I believe.
Section 1-2.05 allows for the city to collect the costs of its, the cost of its collections.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's what I remembered.
And the subset there is, precise citation is 1-2.05 sub A5. The other thing to be bear in mind is yes, we can use liens. I believe this collections company, I'm not sure if their business model includes liens, but certainly with the right kind of a case, perhaps more than a $50 fine. The city can look at imposing liens through the same section, 1-2.05.
Yeah, I'm thinking of like a short-term rental, just frequent flyer, but that gets into tens of thousands of dollars, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And the other one that staff is always, keeps an eye on, as you know, from a couple of cases in the recent past, when we have a short-term rental case that has an egregious nature, we've looked, we've evaluated options beyond mere fine collection, including civil and criminal cases. And they, and we've even brought criminal cases in slumlord-type situations in the past and remain vigilant for that situation, recognizing the different, the significant differences between small-scale problems and large-scale problems.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add quickly. So on this particular contract, I met, I met with them a couple of weeks back. And so they do not take these to collect, or to, they don't, they will not place the lien on, on like the, like on our property. Their method is the franchise tax board of putting the lien against your tax return. But then we talked about, if we needed to pursue that, then we, once it got to that point, then it would come back to us and we could place the lien, which, you know, which we've only had to do once in my time here at the city. And we've had, you know, for, for the public benefit, we've had some short-term rentals where we've collected, I think 6,500 was one and 4,500 was the other, where it was almost at that property lien level, but we ended up, through the hearing process and everything, settling the matter at that point. And, and this contract does include, you know, the hearing process and everything as well. So I expect that this will handle 99% of enforcement issues.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item, Gail?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
So my concern was the same as Bill's. It was, how do we, how do we collect the charges that are gonna be incurred by the, the company chasing the citation? So it sounds like that we can recover that, you know.
If I can interrupt, I apologize. I actually was looking at number three. There are public comments for this one. I apologize, Councilmember Haney, for interrupting you.
That's fine. I think I'd rather hear the public comments and then I'd like to speak after.
Okay. Shall I go ahead, Mayor Stix?
Yes, please. Thank you, Gail.
Our first public speaker is Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, you should be able to speak now. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Mr. Miley, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I like all this. I strongly supported the ban. I like the proposal by the Newport Beach Company. I like the way James set it out. It's straightforward, it's complete. And I read where only 38 of the citations have been paid, or 62, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So having a company involved to make this happen for all of them is a really good idea, especially if they can do other, like, short-term rentals. So my statement is, more complete enforcement of issued fines will make those who pay feel better about the situation, and no one is getting away with the violations. And that would be better feelings for all. And the last thought I had was, and this would make it fair for everybody. So I like this proposal a lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Thank you, Bill. Next, Gail, we have one more.
We have one more. It's Sheri Ann Kate. Sheri Ann, you should be able to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Sheri Ann, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak.
Looks like. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So yes, the sky is cleaner, the air is better in terms of, you know, pollution because of this ordinance. And thank you very much. We're real happy with it. We're still seeing some regular violators. However, what's happening is that they come at various odd times. And what I'm suggesting is that there needs to be a bit of a change in the process. When a citizen like myself calls in with a violation, what happens every time for me, and I have talked to other people who have said that it's their experience as well, is there's a recording. A person doesn't answer the phone, and so you leave a recording of the, the place of the violation and the date and the time. And then there, there's this, you know, would you like a callback? Yes, I would, I would like to hear back about this. So I leave my phone number. And what happens is I get a call back days later, and it is, yes, we'll, we'll go out and talk to these people. We, we need to know what day of the week they're there and what time they're there, and then we will come out. And the problem is that there's a number of them that randomly come out to do this. They, there's not a specific day of the week or a specific time that they're there. So there's a number of them that are falling, falling out through the cracks and are not being cited and continue to violate. So I would like to suggest that somehow that procedure that the code enforcement officer is using be improved so that we can catch those people too, because they're, they're continuing to violate. And it would be nice if we had complete compliance. And so anyway, that's my comment. And thank you again for the good work that you're doing.
Thank, thank you. And we'll actually have an item probably on one of the, one of the upcoming agendas about some code enforcement applications. So we will, we will talk about that.
Good. Thank you for calling in, Sheri Ann. Okay, moving towards discussion. Yes, Randy?
So I find this conversation interesting. If I remember, Suzie, back in 1999, was just adamantly geared up to burning and, you know, people who use blowers on the cross and, you know, it's so interesting. And then here she is today begging for forgiveness. So it's, it's, and I was just the opposite. I was trying to figure out how to find a compromise and ultimately turned to, we've got to do what's in the best interest of the community. So having said that, there, I think there's, there's two thoughts here. One, if we can't hold the gardener accountable, maybe we need to hold the person who hires the gardener accountable. And maybe we, maybe we've been going about this the wrong way. If I'm, you know, I'll use me, for instance, we had a gardener. And when this ordinance went through, I had to go out and buy an electric blower for him to use on my property, because he clearly stated he couldn't afford it, one. And two, he didn't think it was right. Ultimately, he quit. Okay? And that's just business. And ultimately, we hired a company that when they show up, they have two or three of the steel blowers. And that's all they use, are battery-operated. So, you know, just through its own self-policing, it is gonna remove certain gardeners from the system and bring other gardeners into the system. So I see the win there. But I was accountable for not breaking the code. And yet we have citizens in our community who are not accountable. And that's what I'm trying to say here, is maybe we need to address accountability. And then the other thing is, when it comes to citation, that's one issue for using improper equipment. How many citations have we issued for unlicensed business operations in our community? Because that to me is, is as a bigger, is a bigger concern, is though Mrs. Sheri Ann Kate, who just called, made a good point. You know, I know pretty much my gardener comes every Thursday, and I know that pretty much my gardener comes every Thursday at 1:00. So if gardeners aren't showing up on a consistent basis, is maybe they are gaming the system. That's one thought. The other one is just the nature of gardening in general is some jobs take longer than others, some days are longer than others. So I, you know, I probably have a better understanding of this business than most. But having said that, we're talking about accountability here. So we've got to figure out how to make these individuals accountable, one to their community, and two to themselves. Again, there's companies out there that are offering these equipment at a great rate and offering low interest and zero, you know, when you fill out an application, you're not gonna be, your credit isn't gonna be checked and all this. They're pretty much opening their arms and saying, please come buy your equipment from us. We'll give you a great rate and let you on a payment plan. And the gar, and the equipment rental places all have electric rentals now. And I'm in all of them in Ventura. They all carry them. They're all rentable. So I just think that we're making excuses once again. We're kicking this can down the road rather than trying to figure out how to make it, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna write an ordinance, enforce it. If you're not. not gonna enforce it, I say we get rid of it. Just get rid of it. And let's let people do what they want to do. Because that's the environment we're creating. That's truly the environment we're creating. And we've done this in so many other aspects of our community. You know, the arguments that we had over fences and hedges. You know what? If we'd had code enforcement fifteen years ago and actually had people meet the requirement of our codes, we would have never had to have this willy-nilly fencing and living fence and all this other stuff that we've created over the years. We need to figure this out. We either are or we aren't. And I think that's where we are. So I don't see a gray here. I see we either do it or we ban it and we just go back to the way it was.
Susan?
I, I just, uh, in case there's some misunderstanding, I'm a hundred percent in favor of people being accountable and of enforcing the ordinance. Only was suggesting finding a way to help people comply with the ordinance. And I like the idea, Randy, that you've, uh, stated about also making the homeowner responsible. You know, it may be, I, I, I don't, there has to be a, some way for everyone to be accountable and to comply. I, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. But, and, and I've been at, at this far longer than nineteen ninety-nine. I've been trying to, um, ban the gas-powered leaf blowers since they were invented. I have editorials to prove it. So, yeah. Randy?
So getting back to this again, if you look at the fact that a gardener shows up on a premise to perform a maintenance task, um, and we can't catch him, then we need to notify the owner that their gardener is not, is not in compliance and that would they please interact?
Yes.
There's lots of ways of doing this without it being, um, uh, mean-spirited or, or nasty. We're just letting them know that, that we're trying to create an environment that's conducive for all beings in our community to, to live well. Um, even, even the people performing the task.
Yes.
It's just been proven. We know it now. So I'm, I'm just, um, you know, you want to affect change? Go to someone's pocketbook. Okay? You're gonna affect change real quick.
Bill?
So I'm gonna go ahead and, and offer a motion with the comment that, uh, encourage, personally, I hope the rest, the rest of council joins with me in encouraging escalating late fees and owner notifications when required are, are useful. And with that, uh, make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter to, enter into this agreement.
I'll, I'll second that, but I have, can we still ask questions?
I'm just getting it on the table.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So I'm seconding that. And then can I ask a question, uh, James? So if Sheri, if Sheri Ann, when she calls in, gives the address of where she sees the violation, and if she knows the person's name, then code enforcement, instead of, you know, wondering when these people are going to show up again, can go to the business or the homeowner and state that their worker is not in compliance?
And?
Handle it that way.
Yes, yes. And, and, well, yeah, I was gonna say, we've been giving notice, we've been giving warnings in those situations. We take the flyer out, but city attorney's probably gonna comment on whether we can actually issue that citation. One key thing to bear in mind is that the city, because citations in the end might need to be, might end up challenged in the court, we can't issue a citation just on the statement of any given complaining person. Um, as you can obviously imagine what that would mean in a context other than law, um, citations for leaf blowers.
Yeah.
It has to be verified by the city as having happened. But the complaint that, uh, comes in, of course, generates the opportunity for staff to go to the homeowner, to the resident, to the business and say, we received a complaint that your, your landscaping crew is not using the right equipment. Here's our information. Here's our flyer. We'll be watching. And you can, and then invite, invite a conversation. The homeowner either says, oh, I didn't know. I'll get it fixed. If they've been under a rock for the last two years. Or they'll say, no, I don't think this is right, and be defined. And then we'll put them on the list and we'll come, code enforcement can then follow up with them. Or something in the middle and it can be treated appropriately. But just to clarify, we, we can't issue citations on hearsay alone.
I, I, I understand because I've complained a lot about, uh, what I consider animal abuse and it, same situation, no hearsay.
All right, we can have a vote. Gail, please.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick, sorry. Uh, Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great. All right. Thanks once again, James. And, um, it's great. We're not kicking it, the can down the road, right? Let's enforce it.
And collect our costs.
Yes, definitely.
Mayor Betsy, can I request a, a five-minute break?
Yeah, let's do that.
At this point, we have two or three long items ahead.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, y'all. Thanks, Gail.
Anytime you're ready, Mayor Sticks.
Okay, great. All right. We're back. All right, moving forward to number five, the safe speed limits. James, you want to take it away?
Yeah, and I just have a, a quick, um, quick, uh, um, report on this. So the items on the agenda, um, it was on at their request, uh, from Mayor Sticks and Councilmember Francina. We had discussed, uh, modifying the speed limit on March twelfth, twenty nineteen, so almost two years ago. And, uh, at that time, the city council directed staff to identify areas within the city of Ohio in which speed limits could be reduced without endangering federal funding for street maintenance. So, uh, in the report, we, uh, we included a lot of the information from that discussion, but we also, uh, included an attachment that showed which streets we have that are, which speed limits and then which streets we have that are, uh, potentially, uh, that could potentially receive federal funding. And so, um, uh, there's a lot of information. I think it's a seven or eight-page report, but, uh, so there's a lot to it. I guess, uh, we can start with just a discussion. But, we had some potential recommendations that I'll, I'll call out, or I guess options that I'll call out that we can talk about, which is, um, there's options such as adding additional signage, uh, to streets, stop signs, speed limit signs, you know, other ideas like those. Uh, the city could perform a, uh, traffic survey to, to, uh, try to support lowering the speed limits, which does have some cost. I think we estimated about twenty thousand dollars. Um, or, uh, and, and that's the reason you would do the study, the traffic survey, would be to lower the speed limit and be able to justify it and enforce the speed limit. Uh, if we lowered the speed limit without that traffic survey, uh, it likely would not be enforceable, uh, for speeding violations. So that's, that's why we recommended the traffic survey. And we also noted that, uh, to follow up on that report from a couple of years ago, uh, when we said that federal funding could potentially be at risk, we looked closer at that and found that we have not received much funding recently. Um, about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in twenty sixteen, but no funding since, and then no funding for the few years prior. So it was a lot, a big chunk one year, but not much else. And, uh, there is discussion right now about potentially the fed, federal government, uh, following COVID, doing a bunch of infrastructure projects and infrastructure funding, which could potentially be some funding for some, uh, for some of these product, like for some of these streets that would be at risk. But it hasn't been identified yet. So, uh, we just wanted to, to mention that when we talk about potentially risking some funding, that, um, it appears to be, uh, there's some risk, but not, um, maybe as large of a risk as, as people might have expected. So, uh, the other, uh, option we had identified was, um, we've obtained a couple of the radar speed trailers and, uh, and signs, and those could be placed, uh, throughout the streets as well. So there's, we tried to, uh, give like a variety of options that we could, we could utilize, uh, from this discussion. And those are all listed as the potential recommendations. But, uh, the discussion for council is, uh, you know, whether to consider modifying speed limits or any of those types of changes. So with that, we can answer any questions.
Questions? Bill?
What is the current, and I believe this is not an advocacy, don't read too much into this, but I am curious, what is the current state of the law in California regarding, um, speed ticket machines? You know, uh, the, the things where you, uh, you know, if you, if you speed beyond a certain thing, your picture's taken and of your license and you get a ticket in the mail? What is the status of that legally in the state of California?
I'll let the city attorney respond to this. I have to respond to that one. At present, today, automatic speed, speed ticket cameras are outlawed.
In California, okay.
In this state, other states, not so much. Uh, however, there are two bills in the legislature that are pending on this issue. Uh, and if you'll give me a second, I will click up the, uh, the bill numbers. So we've got two bills. One is AB five fifty that would authorize automated speed cameras to be used for, quote, dangerous local streets, not yet a defined term, and active state or local work zones, the construction zones. There's a second bill that's pending, SV three seventy-five, that would authorize automated cameras in school zones, the designated school zones that we're, that we're familiar with. SAB five fifty is carried by Assemblymember Chu out of San Francisco, and SV three seventy-five is carried by Senator Rubio, uh, from down here. And both those bills are moving forward. They, there's some, uh, pretty good headwinds behind them. Uh, this effort was tried a couple of years ago, about two years ago, to lift that ban, and that failed, uh, in result of opposition by a, um, medley of, uh, pro-traffic folk and some on the law enforcement side who were concerned, uh, about, uh, shifting, uh, taking away their role. Um, those headwinds may or may not be the same now.
Those headwinds may or may not be the same now. The, so there is legislation development on that front. And the last point to note for both of those is that if either one or either one or both passed and was signed by the governor, then they would allow civil citations, but not criminal reckless driving felony or misdemeanor criminal cases. It would be the, it'd be a ticket.
Randy? You put your mic on. You're muted, Randy. Thanks. Muted.
So Matt, this is the same, in the line of the question, is there a radius for lowered speed limits near schools right now? So is it 500 feet? Is it 1,000 feet? Is it 500 yards? What? Is there a radius that if we wanted to enact a 20 mile or speed limit around our public schools, could we do that in the city?
Yes, it is 500 feet around schools. The city could set a 15 or 20 mile per hour limit in those areas if the council found that doing so would be necessary for that to be reasonable, that lower speed to be reasonable or safe. The relevant vehicle code section does require as part of that evidence, an engineering or traffic survey, but it doesn't require that that be the only evidence. The council is allowed to take into account additional situations. And I'll note as well, just to finish the point, that authorization also extends to residential or business districts. Again, upon finding that the default 25 mile per hour speed limit is higher than is reasonable or safe.
So 500 feet is technically like, like I live by Topa Topa Elementary. And so does the mayor. So we're looking at roughly, our houses are 80 by 80 here. So you're, so you're, you know, you're talking roughly, you know, four or five houses. That's not an entire street. So it's difficult, you know, like one of our concerns is Drown Avenue, but Drown Avenue is, you know, probably half a mile from Topa Topa. So that was one thing. The next question is on, James, and this is for you. And I probably have the answer, but have we done any trip trip counts on any of our major arteries here in town? So Montgomery, Grand, Signal? Is any of that data available to us, or would that come from the study?
You know, we have done, we have done some trip counts on some streets. We could provide that data. We could provide that data to the city council. I don't know this in which streets exactly offhand, but we have done some trip counts and we moved that the box around a little bit so we can provide the what trip count data we have. But yes, it also would be part of that of that survey.
That seems to be one of the criterias of being able to lower your speed limit. And then the second thing is the crash counts in our community. You present us with a graph on the back which shows, I believe, 10 accidents. Most of them occurring in the downtown area. I'm not sure if we have all the information regarding crashes in the community because some people are involved in accidents and don't have a police officer come to the scene. And they deal with it through their insurance companies. So I'm not sure if this count is accurate or a true reflection. So I don't know how we could get more accurate on that without contacting insurance agencies. And I'm not sure if insurance agencies want to divulge that information. So again, I think that that's going to help us to make determinations as to how and if we can lower, like right now, I believe we are in our residential areas. We are at 25 miles an hour. So I'm not sure how we can reduce it legally. That's, that's where I'm coming from in this.
Any other questions?
I have a lot of questions, but they're related to my, the things that I want to propose. So perhaps are there public comments? Maybe I'll wait.
Okay, Gail, any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have two public commenters on this item.
Thank you.
Okay. The first public commenter is Adam Keer. Adam, you can go ahead and speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stix and members of the council. My name is Adam Keer, and my partner and I own the property at 925 Kuyama. And I wrote to you last summer on following the tragic death of Marion Wheel, who was struck and killed on Kuyama, and expressing my concerns about traffic safety on Kuyama, particularly because of dangerous mix of car traffic, traffic that is using the Kuyama and the the streets through the Arbolata as a shortcut, mixed with pedestrian and cyclist traffic in that same area. I won't belabor, or I won't go over what I sent to you in my letter, but I wanted to point out a couple of issues. I think we all know that people are using Kuyama through the Arbolata as a shortcut for for car traffic. But I don't think that we recognize how concentrated pedestrian cyclist traffic is on that street as well. And so I submitted, I hope you have this in front of you, some exhibits for this evening. One is from Strava, which is an application, is a app for amateur athletes to, you know, record their training rides, their event rides, and they have a heat map that shows the activity of cyclist runners. And I'm showing that to you that demonstrates that that whole section of through the Arbolata is white hot and is is as as concentrated with pedestrian cyclists as the Ohio Valley Trail. And we know that that's being mixed with vehicle traffic using Kuyama as a shortcut. The second exhibit that I included is just showing an alternative to lowering the enforceable speed limit. And this is number, the second photo that I've included is just a photo from Glendale showing how you can add speed humps and add a cautionary, you know, 15 mile per hour speed limit, which is not enforceable, but may have some some effect in slowing traffic because, again, on Kuyama, people are racing through as if they're entering onto a freeway. And finally, the third photo that I've included is just showing, this is a photo from LA showing a another example that is short of lowering the enforceable speed limit, just making the streets a shared slow street, in which case you know, posting that, you know, no through traffic and that, you know, the pedestrians, bicyclists are all on the street. We all have to share this together. This is similar to the living street or Wuener concept of in Europe that, you know, we we all have to make our, you know, respect and and slow down so that we don't, aren't running one another over. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, those are my comments.
I have a question.
Yep, Suzie?
I have your exhibits in front of me, Adam, and I, I'm very familiar with these concepts. In fact, my recollection is that the city signed up with the with Stava. And this was before, I think, James was our city manager. I can go back and look at that. I think I'm almost certain that we signed up, we were familiar with it. And this is what I, let me know, I'd like to know what you think of my idea. If I were living in the Arbolata or in any neighborhood where speeding traffic was a problem, I would organize the neighbors. And it's my understanding that a that the neighborhood itself can set the speed limit if enough people agree. And I have given the council at least three documents verifying what I'm saying, the 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 whole the paradigm of determining speed according to crashes and accidents is now being very, is being questioned by traffic experts and engineers. In my opinion, the Arbolata should not allow all this rat running. There's Matilha High School to consider. And the speed limit in the Arbolata, excuse me, should be 15, not 25, because it is a, you know, it's narrow streets, it's residential, it's used by cyclists and pedestrians. I know that parts of the Arbolata are not problematic, but there are parts where residents have told me that when they go for a walk, they're always looking over their shoulder because they're afraid of being hit. And also, the whole intersection of Kuyama needs to be addressed. And I know that you also are aware of that. And I think that when, when, you know, we discussed this after Marion Wild passed away, and I was at your house, I thought you said that there was a plan that that you that, you know, maybe you could, if it's okay with the rest of the council, wasn't there a plan to fix the intersection at Kuyama at one point?
Mayor, is this a Q and A, or what are we doing here?
And if I could jump in real quick on a legal issue, with apologies to all council members, as you may or may not recall, the the unfortunate death of Ms. Wild is in litigation. So there will be no comments by the city council about that situation or that case.
And we also have another public commenter.
Thank you so much, Adam, for coming. Appreciate that. One more public comment, then, Randy?
Yeah, I just wanted to be to be clear on the procedure here. These are public comments. This is not interactive debates with with the public. And as much as I appreciate Adam and all of his information, that might be provided to us at a different venue.
Note taken. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. One more public comment, Gail?
Yes, the next we have Bill Miley. Bill, you should be unmuted. Go ahead and speak if you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think that the title of this proposal is really more important, maybe, than the discussion of how we do it. And that's the issue of, it's a zero traffic facilities concept that is going through the nation and in California. And as you all know, was discussed in a January 2020 study that was produced by the California State Transportation Agency, which I looked up. I like this idea. I don't see where anybody can effectively argue against the concept and the proposal for doing this because it reduces reducing speed reduces injuries and death, not only for pedestrians, but bicyclists. People are on scooters and horses or whatever, but it also takes care of people who might be in the car that could be injured or traumatized by hitting somebody. On Grand Avenue, this is an example, it's 30 miles an hour, takes about two minutes. If you don't stop, if you remove all the stop signs, you go from signal to gridly, it takes two minutes. If you reduce it to 25 miles per hour, it makes it two minutes and 24 seconds. So it's 20 seconds, 24 seconds are hardly a problem when you're thinking about what we're going to accomplish. So I don't see where the city has the money to implement this now, but I would like to see the city council agree that the policy for zero traffic fatalities is worthy, adopt it, and start to educate folks within Ohio as well as our tourists that we're going to do it over the next few years. So that's going to also make people a lot happier. They're going to move to probably use the streets more because the traffic isn't going to be so fast. And we're going to further having Ohio seen as a gentle community, not dominated by vehicles. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Much appreciated. Right?
Are we in council discussion now?
We're in discussion. Any comments?
Yeah. Well, the city, let's, I want to be really clear on this. I want the public to hear it. I want my colleagues to hear it. Our fundamental and most important responsibility is the health and safety of the public. That comes before anything else. Okay, that comes before speed, that comes before parking, all those things. We're not obligated to facilitate, but we are morally and legally obligated to protect the health and safety of the public. And that includes our most vulnerable citizens. Well, they're not legally voting citizens, but that includes children. And in that respect, we have failed. There's just, you know, we have created, we're a small town. There is absolutely no reason why every child should not be able to safely walk or cycle to their destination. If we had the political will to create a truly bicycle and pedestrian friendly city, and addressing the speed is fundamental, because in many ways, if we simply had a 20 is plenty citywide policy, there's a lot of, you know, we could save a lot of money. We, you know, it would buy us time until we had the money to do wider sidewalks and and striping the streets and all of that. So I've investigated this a lot. And for example, the city of Los Angeles has a program, and I know we're not Los Angeles, but we can look at this as a possible program for Ohio. The citizens can apply if they want their street to have speed bumps. And there's like, and this is residential streets. These are streets that would already qualify. We're not talking about over 30 or 35 miles per hour. This would be 25 mile per hour streets where speeding, such as on Drown, is a problem. You know, I find it very disturbing that the drown situation still has not addressed. The children are growing up and, you know, you can't relax. I have two grandchildren. And I have, I'm on a low traffic street, but I'm always worried that one of them will run out in the street. And it almost happened the other day, a car, and that car was driving slowly. If that car had gone any faster, as the child was going to go around the corner to open the car door before the mother was running behind, she could have been hit. And I, and I know of kids, several kids have been killed. So this is very close to me. But my question is, can we have a program where, you know, we'd have to work out the details, but is the legal, is it legal, since other cities are doing it, where where instead of spending $20,000 on an engineer study, we don't have the money, I don't feel it's necessary, I feel it's the residents themselves that can tell us exactly what's going on in their neighborhood and how they would like to see it addressed. So my question is, could we, you know, can we at least begin by envisioning such a program? We can work out the details, but we have these neighborhoods, Drown, the Arbolata, Shady Lane, Grand Avenue, I mean, and 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 a a related question is, can we at this point legally change the speed limit on Grand to 25? You know, enforcement's another issue, but why do we have signs saying 30 mile per hour on Foothill Road? That's the sign, that speed must have been from another era where we didn't have SUVs racing, you know, up to the top. So, you know, the, I, I, I thought that maybe Gregor was going to show us the map, and then as a council, we could decide what we want to do street by street. But anyway, that's what I have to say for right now. Thank you.
Yeah, and I could respond to the question of, could we change the speed limit of Grand to 25? It is currently 30 miles per hour. And the answer to that is yes, and doing it without a traffic survey means that, you know, if somebody fought a ticket, they they would likely win, but we could change the speed limit of that street to 25.
Well, and I would be in favor of that, even if we don't, you know, the the point is not the tickets. The point is to send a message to slow down and not give permission to go, because we all know that people usually go faster, not all, but many people go faster. Because we all know that people usually go faster, not all, but many people go faster than the spotted, posted, excuse me, speed limit. Okay. Maybe we can get that done tonight.
Any other comments?
Well, what about, what about my question of a program?
Randy, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I have ten questions, but you'll have to give me at least as much time as Suzha. Here's the, the thoughts on this. You know, we had this discussion. I mean, it was real clear that there's, that there's guidelines that, that we have to abide by. Posting a speed limit that's illegal tells the community what? That we can't abide by the laws? So, you know, if there was a way legally to lower these speed limits, I'd behind it a hundred percent. Now, there's other things we can do. The, you know, I drive on Poli right now because I'm doing a lot of jobs in Ventura. And on Poli, the speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour. And they have three, I believe, three signs that each posts its speed limit and if you're going over the speed limit. And I'll tell you what, it works. You know, if I'm doing twenty-seven, I slow down. And I'm traveling in the morning at six-thirty in the morning when there's no one out. But that speed, that, that sign says, hey, you know, the speed limit here is twenty-five. So I would start from a practical point, and that's installing those where necessary and where we can to enforce the speed limits that we can legally. And I, and, and that's, that's where I would see us starting. I would also believe that we could wait until the coffers are filled up and actually earmark some money out of the next CIP funding for street improvement and actually do some studies and get a better understanding of the problems in the community. I'm not saying what, I'm not against what Suzha is saying, that our community members don't know more than we. But the reality is, for instance, if you took Drown, there were eight or nine people pushing that, and there's probably twenty or twenty-three people that live on that street that had no comment. So it's hard to recognize, you know, going about it with public input, is that the win? Because you may not get the win. Again, coming up in the CIP funding, we might be able to actually find that money because we talked about using Drown as a demonstration and actually going about that. But there's other things that, that, that we could be doing. And again, that's, that's better signage, that's better enforcement, and more public meetings like this where we are talking about the community and about speed. And then us personally taking responsibility to drive as slow as we can. Listen, I know my street is twenty-five. I drive twenty, unless I have to use the bathroom. But, but I've taken a responsibility that I'm going to follow the law, not go slower because I, there's no need to speed in our community. I, I get that. Regarding Kuyama, I don't think we have the right to shut Kuyama down or the Arbolata down. That's, that traffic is going through there, and I think it'd be very difficult to create an environment where it was only pedestrian and bicycles when you have an artery that connects the east to the west of the community. I don't know how we could do that legally either. But, so I'm for anything that we can do legally. I'm just opposed to breaking the law.
I have a question. Matt, to me, legal, legal and enforceable are two different things. My understanding is that it's not illegal to post a twenty-five mile-per-hour sign. It's just, you know, the enforceable aspect is the question. Is that correct? It's not illegal in and of itself.
The city can post signs that show a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit anywhere in the city except the state highways. That would be legal. Whether or not the ticket that would be issued by the sheriff's or CHP is enforceable would depend on whether or not there's an engineering survey that supports that twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit as justified by a speed survey. But yes, the city can post twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit signs anywhere in the city except these two state highways. The other question to answer, your earlier question, Councilmember Francina, and your question, Councilmember Brahaney, is it would be legal to post signs lower at fifteen or twenty miles per hour? If, and in this case, to post the sign, we would need the engineering and traffic survey under Vehicle Code Section 22358.3, as elucidated in the staff report. And the key there is that that engineering and traffic survey takes into account, among other things, crash records, roadway conditions not readily apparent to the driver, density, pedestrians and bicycle safety considerations, and the eighty-fifth percentile of vehicle speed. That's been one of the problems that we've seen in the past, is that speed begets speed. Eighty-fifth percentile is a function of what people are driving now, which is, some would claim too fast. That then becomes a basis for hiring. The key there is that an appropriately done traffic survey can look at those other factors. Hence, one of the questions before the council is whether to have that study completed. And the answer doesn't necessarily need to be given tonight. Certainly, funds are in short supply, so that could be deferred till later.
Sure, I would support that and wait, you know, wait till we have the money to do the research and keep this list of streets where we know that we have issues. Kuyama, Foothill, Shady Lane, North Fulton, Drown, Daly, North Signal, Grand.
To list a few.
To list a few.
Yeah. But in the meantime, I just wanted us to be clear, you know, when I lead the bike-to-school events, you know, where I have anywhere from ten to fifty kids, sometimes more, it now takes, you know, sometimes at least two sheriffs, one on each end, to escort them safely. And to me, that, that shows a failure, not a deliberate failure, but we haven't kept up with the need. We haven't kept up the fact that we're a small town with, you know, a lot of narrow streets and traffic continues to increase. And I just feel that if we're really concerned about the health and safety of the public, and especially the children, and we're serious about having a safe routes to school and parks network, this has got to be addressed. It's got to go to the top of the list if we're, if we're serious about that. And that, you know, by, by addressing speed, because there, there are now so many studies showing that speed and safety are not compatible. The data is there questioning the eighty-five percentile rule. And I, I hope that you will take time, you know, to read the articles that Bill Miley and I, and Bill Miley provided, and I provided at least two. There are, there are so many videos that address this old paradigm of determining speed. You know, Ojai should be at the forefront of making our streets as child-safe and friendly as possible. And, and when we make it child-friendly, then we've also addressed the needs of the elderly and everybody in between. If it's, if it's safe for kids, it's bound to be safe for the rest of the population. So I have more questions, but I'll wait until someone else has a turn.
James, you had mentioned just getting more advisory signs. You gave the example of Oxnard.
Yeah, yeah. So what we've, what we've started to see is a lot of cities, I think Portland was mentioned in the report too.
Yeah.
Cities are just putting more advisory signs, you know, reminding people to drive carefully when, you know, children are present or things like that. So, so there's, there's, you know, a few things we could do in the meantime if that is something council wanted to explore. We could do something like come back with a list of, of sites to add some of those signs. And those signs would be about eighty dollars apiece, you know, so it's not, it's not a huge budget impact.
Plus, I bet, oh, sorry. I, I, I think if it became a budget issue, we could send letters to the neighborhood, ask if they're willing to chip in. I bet you they, they would be, or another organization, or the mob shop, or some business would, you know, would help, help fund it. I haven't asked them, but I'm just thinking ahead. Can I ask a question about the thirty mile-per-hour speed that is posted just before you enter down the downtown core? The Caltrans, what is the reason for that, that sign? And then you have a few feet later, oh, great, the twenty-five mile sign through the city. Why would Caltrans have a sign like that which sends the wrong message? Because you're about to enter the downtown core. It's, it's just before the liquor store, I think. You know, you know the one I mean, right?
Oh, about, where is that? That's on the, the west side of town, coming into town?
Yes.
That we're saying, in front of Ojai Liquor, is that the?
Yeah, yeah, in that area.
Yeah, but I think, unfortunately, I think that's just their signage for the state highway, you know? And, and that's the challenge is it's reflected, you know, on this map in a couple of places. And that's, that's one issue is the two, two, two of the main streets, Ojai Avenue and Maricopa, we have limited control over those speed limits due to the, due to them being state highway.
But, but there's no reason why we couldn't ask the new head, I was on a Zoom call with him, and he is so in favor of the active transportation paradigm that they're doing, you know, it's happening all over California. He might be very willing to consider removing that sign. There's no harm in asking.
Yeah, we could always make the request.
Yeah, just make the request because, you know, it's, and it's, and if we're going to have bike lanes there, I mean, event, eventually, right? That's part of the ATP. Those kind of signs don't serve the, the purpose, any purpose. Bill?
I would concur with that request of Caltrans on the coming in. You know, we, it goes to twenty-five, but only after you're down the hill coming into town. It ought to be before you go down the hill. I would also, in that request, ask if the council feels that we should say, ask, point out to Caltrans that the forty-five mile an hour posted on the east side is way too soon, in my opinion. I believe it's, I believe it's before Sewell Park, it's posted forty-five. And, and it, to me, it, it makes sense to request that that forty-five be not, you know, elevated to, you know, past the thirty-five until much further east. I, I make it a practice like Randy says, setting an example. I, I don't, I don't go forty-five until basically Gridley. And I get a lot of, I get a lot of tailgating for, for doing that. In fact, once I was going thirty-five and a, it was a commercial vehicle, was so angry that I was going thirty-five, they did a, passed me on the right at Sewell Park. When people were signaling to turn right, luckily, I got the phone number off of that van. I called the company and they informed me that person had had multiple complaints and they fired that person that day. But, you know, what I'm trying to say is that I, I do think that we could, that it would be appropriate to ask Caltrans to, like Suzha said, to get, get down to the twenty-five a little faster and get above it a little slower going from west to east, in my opinion.
Yeah, we could, we could make those requests. That's simple enough.
Randy?
I, I would not be a fan of removing speed limit signs.
No, I would say not go to forty-five.
No, I'm saying that, but I thought Suzha said to remove signs, and I, I'll tell you what, people need to know what the speed limit is.
Oh, I agree.
We can put twenty-five where it says thirty.
No, we can have five where it says thirty. I mean, why don't we just do whatever we want to do?
But I also agree with Randy that the signaling things, like what they put in Casita Springs, I think help slow people down in Casita Springs where there's a positive feedback. Hey, you know, you're going too fast. And when we can afford those, it'd be nice to get some more.
Well, it seemed like for five thousand dollars, they're a cheap date. So again, it's just a matter of when we, when we can. And in the interim, we just have to, again, we just have to make the public more aware of what we're doing. But you can't, again, Suz, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm disagreeing, but I'm trying to disagree politely. I just think that you got to do what you have to do within the rules because breaking the rules means you don't have rules. So if you don't have rules, why post anything? There's nothing posted on the thirty-three where the ATP project is demonstrated. Why wouldn't we have the speed limit on that street?
It says thirty-five miles per hour, as far as I know.
Nope, not on the right-hand side. There's no sign whatsoever. In fact, I think we asked Greg Grant about it and he said, nope, we don't have a sign.
We should have a sign.
So, you know, people, I think, need to know that. And, and so I agree, we, we have to do everything we can. When we talk about the VMU, it sounded like we could, in the downtown corridor, it sounds like we have more opportunity to reduce the speed there. Am I correct, Matt?
Yeah, there's an opportunity with the right supporting documentation and engineering analyses.
Yeah.
So we can all agree that safety is our number one priority and that people drive too fast in Ojai on a regular basis, and we need to slow it down. So, and we have no money.
Yeah, and one thing we can do is, you know, we have budget workshops coming up in April. And so we can, when we bring the CIP back, I think, I'm taking notes of some of the things that we'll try to identify as potential projects to be funded this year, and then council can prioritize those.
And I agree with Randy, those flashing lights when it says you're going too fast. I mean, that's, that's the most effective, so. Design one that's, Randy?
You know, Mayor, also something that we can do, we don't have to, you know, a, a traffic study is, is obviously important, but we don't necessarily have to wait for that. We have the tools in our Public Works Department where we could actually be going out and measuring the streets of concern and actually start looking at, you know, first of all, how many trips are on these streets? I'm not sure if we can register speed on these streets, but I do know that we can register trips. And it would be nice if we just started somewhere, somehow, and methodically worked through our community and identified more of these streets that are a concern that parallels what, what Suz is trying to say is let the community let us know also. So if there's a way that they can communicate to us that they feel their street's a hot street, then we put that ahead of, let's say, Fulton or something of that nature. But there's, there's ways to do this where we don't have to wait till a date certain. We can start proceeding through this and gathering information for ourselves. And I think that's something that Public Works could do.
I could see volunteers with radar guns taking counts.
And we've, we've done that.
We could do it some more.
We've had hours on it. The complete streets has done that.
With a radar gun?
Still has the data. I don't know, ask Bob Daddy what we did, but, but, you know, it's, it's, time has gone by, so it wouldn't hurt to do it again. But James, I'm going to send you the link to the speed bump program that LA has. It's kind of interesting. They determine, the people request it, the city determines if they're eligible, and then there's a process.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but before we leave this item, I would like to be able to go back to the Drown Street people, and I'm sure Randy does as well. What can we tell, where are we? Because they work so hard collecting the money and then it didn't happen. You know, what, what should we tell them?
They all got refunded.
Yes, I know, but the problem is exists, still exists. There's more kids than ever in the neighborhood, I'm told. It's a real family neighborhood.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, the challenge is we are more broke than we were a year ago when they were going to raise the money. So we are, and we're in a tougher situation, and, and the, the funds weren't, weren't ever completely raised. I, I think that's one that, when we talked about potentially coming back with a plan for some places, we can add some signage. Drown would be on that, on that list of somewhere that we would try to, we'd try to propose some signage there. So, so, you know, that, that's probably.
Is it legal to do oversized speed limit signs?
Those are what we were kind of thinking about, and, you know, people, some cities have gotten creative and added, you know, signs that say like, remember, please drive carefully, or like we were talking about the collection, how they have the ones that say, stop and smell the ocean, and we were talking about, you know, Ojai having stop and smell the citrus instead or something like that, but.
And the other thing is, Public Works could kind of make, do, sometimes do a better job in making sure that vegetation is cut back away from stop signs and speed limit signs.
Yeah.
I don't know if we ever do any county, citywide surveys, but there are some places where the stop signs and the speed limit signs are being shrouded by overgrown vegetation.
Yeah, we'll start with that. We'll do, we'll do a street sign kind of review and, and. and and come back with some recommendations on some signage that can be added.
You know how we were, you know, how we were just awarded our Street Tree America? I sure hope we're not shooting for Street Signage America. You know, we've got to be thoughtful here and we've got to be, you know, careful that every time I turn a corner, I don't see another sign polluting the community. So let's think through this and if we're going to do it, let's do it properly, let's do it. Let's do the due diligence. Let's let's identify the specific streets and the specific areas. Let's work with Caltrans. Let's work with law enforcement. But but let's not let's not turn our community into complete sign community.
No, on the other hand, you know, we've had some deaths here. You know, Marion, my friend Marion, for example, and we need signs there now. We, as we just heard from Adam, and I lived in that neighborhood for years and it's treacherous, especially with children, to walk around those windy streets and
Actually, I I don't drive the Arbolato for a simple reasons that the lanes are too narrow and I'm not comfortable driving through there. I don't I very, very seldom go through there. And now I can't drive down the thirty-three because I'm completely disgusted with what's going on there. So I really have a difficult time getting through this community half the time.
Try to get rid of your car, Randy, and start walking.
I work for a living. I don't know about you retired folks, but
I'm still working.
I'm still working. Any other comments?
Yes. So while we're on the topic, okay, I don't want to lose the opportunity. Since Grand is such a critical route to Topa Topa, you know, it's it's the central west, all those side streets. Most of those kids are going to be on Grand when Topa Topa resumes. Can we, as a council, agree to at least explore replacing those sign? We're not adding signs. We're replacing the thirty miles to twenty-five miles per hour with the understand with the understanding that we've discussed, the leak, you know, but it is legal. It's legal to do so, even if it's not enforceable. It's it also helps with tailgating. Because if the sign says the lower speed, then the the people behind you, hopefully, are not so apt to to tailgate, hopefully.
Well, if we're voting on that, I couldn't support that. Again, I'd like to see us wait, do the proper traffic study, come back with the CIP funding and figure out what we're going to do and go about this in a more methodical and thoughtful manner. Again, Suz, I'm not disagreeing that it shouldn't occur. I'm just trying to say I'm not interested. I'm personally not interested in in putting ourselves in lawsuits. I'm just not. I'm not going to do it.
Is may I ask a question of the city attorney? Is there any possibility of a lawsuit changing Grand to twenty-five miles per hour?
It is difficult to predict whether or not someone may sue us.
I mean, anybody can sue, but would it hold up?
We would be likely able to defend the imposition of a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. Defending any given ticket issued by the sheriffs would depend on the facts of that ticket. It is worth noting that the defense of the sheriffs is not the the defense of a ticket issued by the sheriff falls to the county council or district attorney, not the city. I trust that answers your question.
Yes, well, my I I just feel that I feel so strongly, having led the bike trains for years now and just seeing sometimes how the people's attitude, like, you know, they'll yell at us sometimes. Some some people think it's great, but some people will say, get those kids off the street. It's dangerous, which is the most backward paradigm. And since our first responsibility is health and safety, I would like to make a motion that we we we, in addition to all the things that James is going to bring back for consideration, that we include changing the speed limit on Grand Avenue, which is a residential street. It's also what you call an ulterior street. Is that why it's? You know, it's it's both. But I think I think, given that it's a part of a route to school, Sarzoti Park, I think there's ample justification, safety rationale for changing the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour. That's my motion. Then you say, Gail, can you take a roll?
Well, I give the motion. Second.
Oh, second.
Well, I mean, I'm all for slowing everything down. I'm also for keeping it legal. So I'd like the suggestion from staff at this point in terms of keeping it legal, slowing it down and also keeping in mind our budget crisis. You know, what's the most logical step forward? Because we're all in agreement that we have some safety issues that we need to look into. So
Yeah, what if one thought? One option we have would be putting a putting out either the the radar feedback sign or, you know, or or the traffic monitoring sign that we have. I think we have one available. We could put it on Grand, you know, for the next couple of months and see what impact that has. And then when we come back to talk budget, then we can talk about if we need need to or are ready to go any further than that. But driver feedback signs, that's what that's what I was trying to think of the name. We we just moved the one we have to, we moved one to Aliso and one to South Montgomery. So we could put one on on Grand and see how that, you know, how that works.
I'm not understanding, if the speed limit on Grand is thirty, why would that gadget change it to anything lower?
Yeah, so it wouldn't change the speed limit. It would just give people feedback when they're speeding. You know, that's really
I'm going to cut to the chase. Okay, I've been working on this since nineteen ninety-six, when I was first elected. I couldn't get a majority council vote for bike lanes, okay? That street can easily be restriped. There could be bike lanes, okay? But you can, in my, if 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 as a council, we take seriously the safety of children, the residents can't have both, you can't have both speed and parking on both sides. Something's got to give. And in my opinion, it's easier to change the speed limit. I mean, we should change, in my opinion, we should change the speed limit and restripe the street. But, you know, the restriping is more a complicated process than the twenty-five mile per hour. And so I'm I'm in
We have a motion and we don't have a second. What do we want to do?
Well, I I thought Matt made it clear that it was legal and and Mayor Sticks was asking if it was legal or do we need more information? So
If I could jump in on that one. I understood the motion was made to take the action now to reduce the speed limit on Grand Avenue from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour. That motion did not get a second. Therefore, that motion dies. The council may consider other options. I understood the mayor's question to be to the city manager to provide other options. City manager has provided another option for the council to further consider. One other, if I could be so bold, the council might also direct the the staff to evaluate as part of the budget to be budget recommendations to return in the coming budget workshops, I believe in April. The direction could include as an ask of staff to see if there is room in the CIP budget, that is, the capital improvements budget, for the necessary speed survey to evaluate these questions. That would be a reasonable compromise.
That's more systemic and, you know, it will take us to where we want to go. Do you do you agree with that?
We'll
I don't necessarily
What?
I don't necessarily agree with that because that they might base their their speed limit on the eighty-five, whatever the percent, you know, that there haven't been accidents. And and that's kind of old thinking. I don't know what they're going to base changing the speed limit on. I don't know if the if I if those criteria are actually valid for protecting the the health and safety of the kids and other people that that use that route for bicycling. Bill?
I'd like to move acceptance of the city manager's recommendation as one concrete step to try to get some traffic calming on Grand Avenue.
Driver feedback signs?
Yes.
And I would second that, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Shall we have a vote? Gail, please.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, great. And and then we can continue to look at these in the in the coming budget meeting.
Yeah, the traffic calming measures in our budget process.
And then make it a systemic and get community.
We will do that. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, number six, City Hall Campus Report. Take it away, James.
Yeah, so this item is on as a request from two council members. It's a fairly simple item. It was the question was how and and our, you know, for information on how and when the garden. Well, the the name somehow keeps getting longer. The Community Garden Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee was formed. And so the report includes some snippets of the minutes from the meetings back in twenty nineteen. In particular, one of the budget meetings on June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, where the city council moved to create an ad hoc committee to determine how to best use the area of the city hall property designated as a community garden with a time certain deadline to report back to council. And then it has some additional minutes where at different points, Councilmember Haney and Councilmember Blatts were identified as as being on that committee. And so that information is provided to respond to the the original request to review the committee. And then I guess the the issue before council is if there's any other items that need to be reviewed or or discussed. So with that, I can answer any questions if there are any.
I have a suggestion, but not a question.
Okay, any questions?
So if I understand correctly, we have heads, what do you call? We have a committee of two council members for every individual component or almost every individual component of what we are now calling the the camp, the City Hall Campus Park. Is that correct?
So there is, I that's a good, or I glossed over one point. There is a climate park, or I'm sorry, the Middle Stewart Creek Council Subcommittee, which we've started to shorten that name to the Climate Park Subcommittee. And so there is that committee and there is the Community Garden Committee. And then there was a pickleball court ad hoc committee, but that has been disbanded. So those were the three.
Okay, so so my into my way of thinking, a campus committee.
Oh, where? Are we into deliberation now or just questions?
Okay, any public comment, Gail?
Yes, we have one public commenter. Karen Karen Quimby?
Thank you.
Would you like me to bring her in?
Wonderful. Thank you.
Karen, you should be able to speak. You can go ahead and unmute your microphone.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Quimby. I was born and raised and live in the city of Ojai. My family owns the apartment buildings located at four oh eight South Ventura Street, directly across from the pickleball courts on the city campus. I'm speaking on this agenda item tonight on behalf of our tenants who live in those apartments and other neighbors affected by the noise from the pickleball courts. Let me say at the outset that I'm a fan of pickleball. It's a great sport, especially for older adults, and I've played myself. These comments have nothing to do with the pickleball as a sport. However, I have a number of questions that I was hoping that your campus report would have addressed. The Ojai City Council and City Manager have been continually contacted by neighbors who are suffering daily, hourly hardship from the extreme noise the pickleball players produce with their plastic balls and wooden paddles. It continues to baffle and frankly anger us that the pickleball players are granted the right to play at the site, knowing how deeply the noise affects the neighbors in their homes, especially when there are good viable options to accommodate the pickleball players at more appropriate locations, such as Matilah Middle School and Sewell Park. The city has promised to try to mitigate the noise from the pickleball play. You have installed fabric at the south side of the court, which into and my question is which independent agency has tested the current noise barrier to determine if it's working to relieve the noise pollution for the neighbors? If no independent testing has been completed, my question is, why is the city planning on moving forward with installing additional material that may or may not work? I understand the city may install material that the same fabric at a three-foot height on the Ventura Street side of the courts. There are two-story apartments on that side. How will a three-feet barrier reduce the noise to the second floor of these residences? Currently, your neighbors are trapped in their homes with windows and doors closed to try to survive the noise from the courts, as they have been all year, being homebound because of COVID, while the pickleball play continues. We urge you to immediately halt the play until successful noise mitigation efforts are completed and tested, or at the very least, to immediately limit the times of play to the hours of the workday from nine AM to five PM. This will allow the neighbors to be able to open their windows and enjoy the backyards or balconies in early evening hours as the weather warms up. Under no circumstance should you extend the playing times into the morning or evening hours. We do not understand how you could have allowed the play to continue for over a year before you have adequately resolved the noise issue. This is not the way to treat your neighbors. We implore you to treat your neighbors as you yourselves would wish to be treated. Thank you for your service to our city and for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Thanks for coming. Okay, discuss Bill, then Randy.
Yeah, I want to make a suggestion because I think we have a focusing on the issue at at hand, the agenda item, which is the the coordination matter. We have a person that is already designated to be a point coordinator, answering to the city manager on the Climate Park matter. And I think this particular person, I I took the liberty of asking her if she would be willing to have some sort of a structured additional responsibility without pay. She's not being paid now. And and I don't know if I can name a person or I just have to talk about a possibility of a person. Mr. Summers will have to correct me on that one. And I I know this person would be, I think, I don't know, I have a lot of confidence that her. I think a lot of us do, and I think it might make make sense for us to take a step towards asking the the city manager to consider working with the person that's currently designated to coordinate the Climate Park activities into the the overall campus activities at this time. So that's my suggestion.
And to answer your question, Mayor President Wirick, because it's not a city employee, you could name a name.
Okay, well, the the person I think we ought to consider for that expanded task, since she's willing to do it and has a good track record already, is this Tara Saylor.
Well
Randy and then Suzie.
Yeah, I'm I'm a fan of Tara. But pre-COVID, we were actually in, I think, council was actually in discussion about creating a position that is actually going to do that site management.
And we don't have money for it now.
And so I'd be more inclined to leave what we're doing as is until, again, we come out of COVID and that we get our funding sources and that we open up the interview process. I don't I don't necessarily want to give one person a leg up in the interview process for that position because it would be a highly coveted position to be the liaison to to all of the users of that facility and the future direction of that facility. So that's my take on that, Bill. I think Sarah's a great individual. But right now, what we have is working, so I don't necessarily think that we need to change. I'd like to wait and actually get a permanent employee to do that. That's my take.
Susan?
I think Tara is very competent, but I think before we give her additional responsibility, I would like to know exactly what the responsibility is of each individual component of the City Hall Campus, and who is responsible for that component so that we don't pass it on onto James. And my understanding is that she would not, she would be a volunteer coordinator, Bill? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, she'd be willing to do that, and I want to point out, Susan, that none of us on council have any administrative authority. So all we, all we are now is advisory to the city manager, or to whoever the city manager delegates administrative authority to. So these, these, these are simply advisory to the city manager. And the idea I had is maybe consolidate a little bit, not necessarily do away with what's existing, but just have a little bit more of a consolidated coordination, since she's willing to do it on a volunteer basis.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too, and so people know where to go, because I'm getting a lot of questions and people.
Need a point person.
People don't really understand who's in charge, so it seems to make more sense to have one committee, because the three of you can't talk about it anyway, right?
Well, or just have one, one sort of coordination person to help with, help.
Help me to understand what that person would do? They'd receive a question and then take it to James?
That's my idea.
They have no authority?
Only the authority that would be delegated by the city manager, but not as an, not an employee, it's pretty much just a point person to take feedback and to convey our city policies.
And we have so many people who would love to get their hands dirty at this point, and, you know, as things start opening up, it's a great opportunity to do something outside, but it's still safe. And Tara would be more than happy to to coordinate all the different groups.
And I'm thinking she's already kind of doing that with the climate park.
Yeah.
And we worth a try, because it's not, like Matthew said, it's not an employment situation. Anyway, just a thought.
Okay.
Susan?
Could, could we do this with, if Mayor Stix is willing, could we do this with the stipulation that she works with Mayor Stix? Would that be acceptable? Or if she needs help, you know?
Again, we already have two people, two councilmen assigned to that facility. So why would they not, why would she not come to us?
Well, I'm not talking about somebody, I feel like with all the things that's happening, you know, including the Memorial Parkers, all kinds of things are going to, it's becoming more increasingly vibrant and busy. It just seems like someone needs an overview, and someone, she may not be free to meet with a potential, but if somebody wants to come at three o'clock on Friday afternoon, if she's busy, can she call on one of the council members?
She, call on the two council members that have the assignment.
Actually, can call anybody.
Get to the point, don't beat around the bush.
Okay, I just thought, Randy, that at the last meeting, or whenever we discussed this, you said that James can handle the volunteers, or something to that. I just, I want to make sure that there's someone that can meet with the volunteers and orient them to the whole scope of the campus and find out what they want to do and get them going on a regular basis.
And that, I'm suggesting that Tara could fulfill that role, working with the city manager and the existing committee structure.
Okay.
So alls I would do to clarify that is, how do you do that on a part-time basis or a volunteer? It's a full-time position. That's what I'm saying, I'm just.
That's why I'm suggesting.
Right now with that facility, if someone has a concern, it's going to be the three or four groups that are already assigned, that already have some form of a contract with the city. Now, if anyone would like to participate with any one of those groups, they can technically go right to that head of that person and say, we'd like to be a part of the Memorial Garden, can we volunteer with what you're doing? We'd like to do with the organic waste, can we do something with you? If they want to do something on the Stewart Canyon, they could go to Tara right now and do the same thing. So help me to understand what we're creating that isn't already in place.
An expansion of the memorandum of understanding that we have with the climate park to include Tara to handle some of these other information functions.
And Mike and Randy, are you and Ryan committed to working with the volunteers, and Tara specifically?
Well, I told you my feelings about Tara, I know her personally, I think she's a loving woman, I have no problem working with her.
You'd said in the past that you didn't want to coordinate volunteers?
I didn't say that.
So are you're, you're happy to coordinate the volunteers?
I have no problem doing what I'm doing right now. And I don't think Ryan does either.
So we can channel and funnel all those questions to you and then Tara can coordinate?
If that's what we're doing, I have no problem with that. Tara can get hold of Ryan and me, I'm, I'm just lost here, you guys, on what we're trying to do here. We seem to be walking in a circle versus being a little more specific. If we want to change the makeup of the ad hoc committee, someone say that.
Okay, well, I think I'm being very specific about what I'm suggesting with Tara, just to provide a coordination liaison to the city manager with the existing committee structure, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and the, and the only reason we're talking about this is because there was a general lack of clarity, and people didn't know what's going on, you know?
Let's see, what I find interesting about that statement is, did they ask the city manager?
Yes, yes.
And the city manager couldn't explain to them what was going on?
He'd done, there was some research, and it's still, I would say inconclusive, and yet, let's, let's move on, and let's get some things going, let's get some volunteers working, and we have this incredible person who's ready to jump in there, so let's do it. What do you say? Bill?
Yeah, I'm going to make, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we, we ask the city manager to explore a memorandum of understanding with Tara Saylor for coordination of activities and information dispersal with the community campus, garden campus. That's my motion. It'll be done through the city manager, MOU.
Okay, I'll second that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, why don't we amend it, Bill, and just say, let's also abandon, let's, let's remove Ryan and I from that committee, and then Sarah can run the whole show.
That's not my motion. No, it's not really.
How is Sarah gonna, how is Sarah going to interact with Ryan and me?
Uh, my, my opinion was that she was gonna, I know her, she'd be more than happy to talk with you and, and, and ask your opinion and your advice and convey information to you, more than happy.
Yeah, I spoke with her also, she was really excited about it.
I think she looks forward to working with you, Randy, and Ryan as well.
So, Susan, did you speak with her also?
No. I mean, I, I know her well, I've known her since she was a baby. And that's, I knew her when she was a baby.
I talked to her because of the, the climate park situations. I'm on the climate park group, so I called her with respect to expanding the climate park function, why I called her, when she'd be willing to take it. Anyway, I haven't, I've made a motion.
Yeah.
Like you said, I'm just going to say, I, you know.
And I'm not going to accept your amendment, but I don't want to get into that.
You don't have to worry about my amendment, my concern is, she's an applicant for a future position with the city. And it just concerns me that it's going to take that pool of applicants, where people are going to think, well, they already have someone, they've already hired her. That's my concern with that, so I'm just voicing it.
Okay.
That, you may have that concern about any volunteer, you know, a lot of people volunteer, and then they, they train, and then they get the position, that's not uncommon, but that's not what we're doing, but that's not uncommon, it's not illegal, it's, it's normal part of life.
No, I, like I said, that's my motion, it's not amended.
Okay, we ready for a vote? Gail?
Ready.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wirick?
Yes.
All right, great, all right, home run tonight.
Clarity.
Thank you, yeah, moving forward with clarity, thank you all. Okay, so move on to the council member reports. Everybody have anything, Bill?
Okay, really quick, one, it was nip and tuck, but the modified conditional use permit for the toll landfill got approved unanimously by the Board of Supervisors, a superior environmental alternative to going to waste management, and a superior set of incentives for maximizing the use over time, you know, in terms of filling to a level rather than to a set date. So it was very, it's, it's good for the environmental health of the overall, especially West County, to have a publicly accountable landfill continue to be viable. Number two, OBGMA is going to be having an agenda item this week on evaluating the CDFW in-stream flow recommendations and considering what kind of public comment the agency might want to give to CDFW on whether they're properly defining the unimpaired condition scientifically or not of this watershed. Ventura River Water District is also looking at doing that. And I wanted to say, Bessie, I'm looking forward to talking with you about something with the, the Community Energy Alliance, I don't know if I got the words right on that or not, because I've been looking at moving in terms of grid backup batteries, moving to liquid metal batteries as opposed to lithium ion banks, which are much more sustainably, able to be sustainably produced and recycled over time. And there are pilot projects coming, coming across the transom in different parts of the world on that, and I just, I'm looking forward to talking about that and maybe suggesting they look into some of, you know, ways of circumventing with grid backup some of the environmental problems with the lithium ion technology, so.
Great, can't wait, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a couple of things, I went to the city selection committee meeting, and
it was really wonderful to hear all the nominees for the California Coastal Commission, just super inspiring, committed environmentalists, and Brian Brennan was there, and he gave a really interesting speech, spoke really eloquently about the need for skilled listeners and ex parte communicators, and so all these really talented, all women too, are being, you know, they're being sent up to the governor, all their applications, so that's exciting. I joined the Family Fund Board of the school board, we had our first meeting, and that's a really exciting, they do so much for our community, so I'll report on that later. Last night was the Ojai Unified Panel, A Place at the Table, in honor of Women's History Month, a really wonderful event, well-attended, very interesting. Disaster Council is tomorrow, woo! And we're going to talk about a rundo on firehardening homes and disaster preparedness, so that's exciting.
And goats.
Yes, absolutely. There was, on Saturday, there was a solidarity vigil against anti-Asian hate and racism in Libby Park, and I attended that organized by Francesca Lyes and Chiani Dri, and Reverend Dr. Greg Kumura, Reverend Dr. Greg Kumura from St. Andrews was there, spoke very eloquently, really moving event, so thank you all. And then next meeting, we're going to have a presentation from help of Ojai, a year in COVID review, so that will be really wonderful to hear about all the, all the work they've done. And then next month, we'll have year-end review from Tiffany about what's happened in the schools in last year, which is so important, and.
Great.
So.
Open, open. Open, please.
Coming, it's coming, you know, it's a lose-lose situation, so really got to.
The kids need in-person.
Yeah, so that's all I have. James, city council report?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. People probably don't realize this, because the city left the Tree City USA sign up for 12 years, even though we weren't a Tree City USA, embarrassingly. But we are proud to announce that we are officially, again, a Tree City USA, and we have scheduled an event on Thursday, April 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. that will be at Libby Park, and we'll post some information on the website, but it's going to be a celebratory COVID-safe event, where we're going to plant a tree and unveil the Tree City USA sign. And so that is, is a big one that we're proud of, and that's coming on April 22nd at 11:00 a.m. And then I was going to mention Disaster Council, thank you, Mayor Stix, for mentioning that, the, the link to watch that or participate in that is on our city calendar, it's open to the public, and will be tomorrow. And then for the next council meeting, I just wanted to mention, we have a couple of big items, so we'll try to, to not add a whole lot to it, I think, well, depending on the discussion on the future agenda item list, but we have, we're planning to bring back an item to discuss what we're calling alternative housing options, which are the ADU discussions we've had recently on the programs like LA has, where they have the, the plans that you can get through the city, so those types of things, and then also to bring back the tiny homes term sheet, for lack of a better word. And so that's going to be probably the, you know, the, the main item on, on the agenda, but we're also going to bring back the goal setting to kind of keep working through those goals as well. So between those two items, that, that'll probably be the bulk of the, of the time for the meeting on the 13th.
Bill?
Manager, Mayor.
Yep.
James, what's our current, I have two questions, well, I have a future agenda, but I have a question on this, what is our current timetable for completion of the pickleball mitigation project, mitigation project?
It is expected to be complete the first week of April.
First week of April? The wall and the three-foot on the Ventura Avenue? Okay, and then we're going to be taking noise measurements after completion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and then what is our current status of getting the Topa Topa concrete we're doing? That's now the city's job to do?
Yeah, current status is, we, we are trying to rush the permit, so we have submitted it to Caltrans, and we requested that they rush it as a minor modification to the permit that they already issued, and, and due to, we cited the fact that it is a highly trafficked area and an area of particular concern for safety, so we're trying to get Caltrans to push it.
And you know what, I almost wonder if we should consider the legal basis for ask forgiveness as we move close to Orange Tier? We really want to get that done before Orange Tier.
Mm-hmm.
And that's.
We could, the risk that, you know, the risk, the reason why I haven't done that is the risk would be, you know, potentially they find a problem and they make us tear something out, and so that, you know, that's the risk, we could, we could try it, you know, it's something.
I mean, we're just, we're just putting, making things flat inside the existing curb line. I, I just really worried about, we get into, well, into Orange Tier, it's just going to be harder and harder to get this done.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think what we, what I talked recently with Public Works about doing was, is just starting to, putting out the request for bids based on the design and not waiting for the permit, so I think that's something.
Yeah, that would, that would be helpful, and also because you want to try to lock in. Yeah, that would, that would be helpful and also because you want to try to lock in. I can tell you from experience, recent experience, there's a concrete shortage out there.
Oh, yeah.
And you want to try to lock in a, a date as soon as you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, even if you have to pay a small penalty on it. I don't know if Randy's been having this experience, but it's hard to get a concrete date now. Okay, enough said.
Thank you.
Uh, Susan?
Yeah, James, um, we're going to get you the earth-friendly pest management plan. I, by the end of the month, I'm told from Kathy and Patty Pageland, they're just going through it one more time, and then you can decide which meeting is best. It could be, it'd just be nice to do it in April. You know, but it could be the second meeting, sounds like. And then um I feel confident once we can, if we can get through the housing in April, Bill turned in the term sheet for the animal ordinance about a year ago. I'm pretty confident I can have that, my end of it, ready for May. I've just done a lot of studying and and I've had a lot of experience over the year, uh, this past year with animals and um I really want it to be a great draft, so, but I'll, I'll, I'll bring it, I'll, I'll do my term sheet.
Yeah, I think we actually have that penciled in for May because we also were trying to, we, uh, City Attorney and I found a couple of outdated pieces of language that we need to update too, so.
Oh, good, yeah. And and I really want that to be a pub, a very public meeting, so people with animals can, you know, weigh in. You know, I think it's going to be a process. It's not, it's going to take some, some time to get it right.
Yeah.
It's worth doing right.
See, I see the animals are, speaking of, the animals are converging on that. I should get all my three pugs in here at the next meeting.
Everybody bring their animals for that meeting.
Yeah, are we on future agenda items, by the way?
Yeah, we're still there. Um, do you have something else, Bill?
Yes, uh, on the urban forestry res- uh, resolution update, you know, we're years behind. I, I would hope that we could get to it pretty soon and then I have a there's a question, I don't know if this is proper or not. Matthew, you're gonna have to tell me. I have a volunteer that wants to help that has experience in this, years of experience of this in a previous life with uh, Keep America Beautiful, and it's my wife. And can she, can she, can she contribute to this review?
Let's take a close, careful look at that one. There are a variety of complexities that arise with.
No, I, I told her I would bring it up as an open session because, but yeah, she, she has, you know, just on it asked.
Yeah, generally a volun- a generic open volunteer opportunity with can include any spouse of a council member, but the city cannot enter into individual contracts.
No, 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 no contract. She just wanted to ask if she could read and and submit her thoughts because she actually spent a couple decades doing this kind of thing.
Yeah, submitting comments on a public draft would be fine. That would definitely be fine.
All right, thank you. And and can we get to it pretty soon, James? I mean.
I, yeah, I, I asked for a status on that today, I think. Let me see if I have it. Yeah, I will, I won't hold the meeting up, but yeah, well, I'll stress that it's a priority.
I mean, we said we were going to do this, what, a year and a half ago?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, James, the electric vehicles for the post office and the electrification of city vehicles, when would be a good time for that?
Yeah, so I think at this point, um, we, we had a we had a request from two council members to bring that back, so I have it penciled in for April 13th, so.
Great, thank you. All right, and it's not even 10 o'clock, y'all. Way to go.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Y'all.
Andy, Phil, Betsy.
Hi.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night, Randy.